Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. on October 12th. Could rise for pledges please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is our October 12th business meeting. Dr. Pieser has asked to make a statement before we begin. Dr. Pieser?
Thank you, Mrs. Glennon. I'd like to share with the public the response that we've written to parents regarding a number of challenges that have been made tied to how we are celebrating Halloween in the schools. So if I might, I just would like to read this letter. And if the date on the letter says October 10th, it was supposed to be October 12th. I actually sent the final draft of the letter to Kathy Benetti to email to all parents and then realized I had forgotten the date, typed the date in and typed it in as the 10th. Some people are probably thinking that this was all pre-prepared. Needless to say, that was not the case. So, the letter states, "Dear parents, we are writing to you in response to the accusations that have been made against the school system around how we celebrate Halloween in the schools. The misinformation around the decisions the school made tied to celebrating Halloween is huge, and the spreading of untruths by parents and members of the community very disturbing. First, for the last five years, the schools have been configured as grade K-2 and grade 3-5 schools. Halloween parades were held in the K-2 schools; they were not held in the 3-5 schools. With the reconfiguration of the schools to PK-5 at the start of this school year, the elementary principals came together with me to talk about celebrating Halloween. The thoughtful discussion centered on creating a Halloween celebration that would be inclusive of all children would involve parents and perhaps the larger community, would engage children in games, activities, and more. Many of the schools had held such events for years with much success. PTAs were integral to the planning and executing of these events. Ultimately, all eight principals, with my endorsement, chose to focus their energies on a family Halloween celebration and forego the 20-minute parade in school. The thinking behind this decision was that a family event in the early evening would enable all who wanted to be a part of the Halloween celebration to do so. Meanwhile, children who for religious or cultural reasons would not take part could easily and without stigmatization not attend the event. In addition, in recognition of many working parents who have difficulty leaving work to come to school, an evening event would allow them to be present with their children. Finally, for children who may not have a costume to wear at school, a family evening event that centered on fun and games and not one's costume seemed far more appropriate. Sad to say, while careful and sensitive thought went into the decision to celebrate Halloween at a school/PTA-sponsored major event outside of the school day, there are those who unmercifully attacked the decision, falsely accusing the Milford Public Schools for banning Halloween. We have been accused of being un-American, of denying children participation in American tradition, and that we should be ashamed. We struggle to understand why we should be ashamed about the Halloween celebration that each school and PTA is sponsoring, wherein children are encouraged to wear costumes, will be given candy, will spend an hour or more in fun and games. Our feeling is that the planned school/PTA event in each school is far more reflective of the values of the American culture and that family and children are being celebrated through a Halloween gathering. There are those who feel a 20-minute parade is more important, however, and its elimination is contributing to the demise of Milford as a city and Milford as a community, as well as the demise of the Milford Public Schools. Those of you who have children in our elementary schools know how untrue these accusations are. You know the values of our building principals, their love of their children, their unwavering commitment to doing the best they can in serving them. The false accusations that have been made are irresponsible and the antithesis of what we try to teach children. The principals and I are about educating our children. With this in mind, knowing that the issue of Halloween has detracted from what we are truly about, and our time with children around teaching and learning is most important, we have decided to reverse our decision. In an effort to move forward, the PK through five schools will hold a Halloween parade on Friday morning, October 30th, at 8:45 until 9:05 for the early start schools and at 9:15 to 9:35 for the late start schools. More information about the parade route, parameters around costumes, and other details will be forthcoming from individual principals. We wish to thank the PTAs for their incredible investment in the family Halloween events that have been or are being planned for each of the schools. Your time and careful planning are so valued and will guarantee a wonderful experience for every child in attendance." And the letter was penned ultimately by me, but it was in concert with our assistant superintendent, Mr. Burt, and also all eight of the elementary principals who gathered today and gave input to what we should say to the community. So I just wanted to express this, and my hope is that it will put this issue to rest, and all the people who maligned the principals, maligned the Milford Public Schools, will basically pause and say, "Wait a second, did I have all the facts? Did we really eliminate Halloween from the schools and ban it from the city of Milford when absolutely none of those statements are true?" And in fact, what the principals thought they were doing was something far more substantive because it involved families and children in a much larger and affirming event that would take place after school was over.
Thank you, Dr. Pieser. We'll move on to student reports. Foreign has the privilege of going first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're going to start with academics. So, this past month, Foreign senior Victor Rosado is a finalist for the United States Youth Senate Program. He was nominated by social studies teachers Beth Gilman and Frank Tubka and has been selected for a chance to be interviewed and to spend a week in Washington, DC. Congrats to Victor. Foreign senior Mark Duffy received the Yale Brook Award Wednesday, October 7th, for Outstanding Academic Excellence. Congrats to Mark. Moving on to sports. Cedric Lynn Gain was News 12's Athlete of the Week in the first week of October for his performance in soccer, indoor track, and outdoor track. In addition to that, RJ Bellato was the Connecticut Post Player of the Week in the first week of October for his performance in football.
All right, moving on to guidance news. During September, Foreign hosted Senior Parent Night. The school counselors presented information on the college application process, and the admissions officers from University of Connecticut, Southern, and Sacred Heart Universities spoke to students about the admissions process. School counselors also welcomed 39 parents to Foreign with parent orientation on September 30th. Parents had an opportunity to meet their child's counselor and to learn about the academic requirements at Foreign High, as well as the various athletic and extracurricular offerings available. Seventh and eighth grade open houses on October 1st. Prospective students and parents had a chance to tour the building and hear from current students faculty about the athletic, academic, and other offerings available to students. The PSATs will be given to all 10th and 11th graders on Wednesday, October 14th. The PSAT has been redesigned and will prepare all students for the redesigned SAT, which will be administered starting in March 2016. Students will be able to utilize the Khan Academy to obtain free SAT prep once their scores are available. Is that okay? Any other news?
Yeah, okay. Other news, the Homecoming Dance is at place on Saturday, October 24th, and the theme will be Greschen Gardens. Thank you.
Thanks. And Dean Joe. So now we'll go on to Jonathan Law, David, and Emily.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, we're going to start with academics. So far this month, 10th and 11th graders are taking the PSATs this Wednesday for the new SAT-like format. There's also a new support center at Jonathan Law, and it's available for any students to drop by in case they need any help in any subjects. Teachers are doing mini lessons for 7th and 8th graders, and clubs are representing themselves in the gymnasium during an open house. The mini lessons are for students from 7th and 8th grade to get an opportunity to see what high school is like before going into school. And there's going to be a Southern future teacher organization, which is the Junior and Senior Breakfast on October 30th.
In athletics, our boys soccer team is on the race to qualify for state, so it needs four wins. Girls volleyball also is in the race with 3-1 wins to qualify. Girls volleyball also raised more than $500 for the suicide prevention this season in honor of Lord Gonzales. Football is also fundraising money. They're doing a different clause every game, every home game. So against Guilford, they raised money for the animal shelter. Against East Haven, they raised money for suicide prevention. And this week against Eastline, they're going to be raising money for the American Cancer Society, and they're going to be selling things called a Wall of Hope for someone who knows fighting cancer. They're also going to be selling boulevards that they're going to release at halftime in honor of anyone who's fighting or lead lost against. The game's also going to be televised. And lastly, for athletics, girl volleyball Kristen Frank was named the Game Time CT Player of the Week.
And guidance, 9th grade advisory groups are focusing on the transition to high school, and guidance counselors are going into the advisory rooms to explain the steps to be successful in high school. Parents of the senior class asked about the college application process during conferences on October 7th and 8th. College visits are continuing this month, including Maris, Yale, Fairfield, University of Mass, Quinnipiac, Springfield, Southern, Eastern, Western, and Central. And seniors are still continuing their college application process.
And some other things going on at law. Our advisory classes have been discussing ways to prevent and report bullying for the bullying prevention room. We also had our parent teacher conferences on October 7th and 8th. This past October 6th and October 8th, students went to West Shore and Harborside to advocate about why law is such a good school and why they should come here versus a private school. Our open house will be Thursday, October 15th. And also, we have a Retail 101 coming up, which is a big clothing sale, which is going to benefit our Model United Club and our Drama Club. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Certainly, Mr. DeRosa has a question for you.
I don't know. I only do this because I don't know if I can make the event, but you had, you sold the squares for the cow thing.
Yes. I don't believe we're doing that this year.
No, not that I'm asking to do it again. What I'm asking is that, is there any way where we publish the information where people that may not attend the school or may have friends who go to school that want to contribute? Is there any way the information is published so people can participate in that, at least donate or whatever else?
I know for the Retail 101, a lot of signs, like signs that you stick in the ground, get put up around town and even in other towns, I'm pretty sure. But other than that, I don't think there's much promotion that gets going.
The Advocate would probably also be advertising it as well, either putting it on Twitter or the website that we have for the newspaper.
So is that all put on our website at all, the details of some of those activities?
Probably not the Jonathan Law website.
Yeah, it's on the Jonathan Law website, on like the front page usually, like what's going on that weekend.
But if there are major pieces of information that would be good for the board to know, if you were to provide that information to me, I can make sure that the board receives it.
I'd appreciate that.
I would underscore the major piece.
Right, not every page.
They're not necessarily going to read three pages, but if there were some critical events that were coming up, or you know, just send them to me, I'll make sure that they receive that.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
If you guys want to go into your homework, this would be the time for you to fit up in and take the class. If you want to stay, you may. I will move on to public comment. I'm going to read the public comment statement. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education Personnel or any person associated with the Milford Public School System. Security measures and matters relating to the negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Insistent with the principles of the Federal Education Rights Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Please be advised that our meetings are live on Channel 78 on Cablevision and somewhere on AT&amp;T, I'm still not sure where that is. But I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and your address if you'd like to address the board. So anybody who'd like to address the board this evening?
My name is Christopher Thomas. I live at 8 Argyle Road. I'd like to speak on two different matters there, so I'll try to keep it under the three minutes. One, I'd like to applaud Dr. Pieser's letter. I thought that was an outstanding explanation of what goes on in our schools. I say that as a very involved parent, and I'm going to brag a little bit. I'm involved in all my kids' PTAs. I am right now Vice President of the Meadowside School PTA. The sun ran on my face this from six hours outside of the Meadowside Fun Run today. And as a member of a PTA and a parent who pays attention to what goes on in my children's schools, I knew the real reasons behind the decision for the Halloween parade. I am helping to plan, along with several other parents here in attendance, Meadowside's new thing, Meadowside Mash, which we're going to call this year on October 30th, which will involve a parade and a dance and a trunk or treat and numerous other arts and crafts, all related to Halloween, which is very well supported by our principal and our staff. So I found the rumors today, and more importantly, the comments underneath the rumors, to be horrendous, to be horrific. It made me sad to live in this town. It made me sad as an American today because the racism and the xenophobia and the lies were stunningly awful. And I would hope that anyone in this town, and God forbid, any official in this town who helped stoke the fires of that ignorance, would think again before doing it. And as a former member of the media, I call on the media to watch how they stoke the fires of ignorance when these issues come up. On the macro issue related to that, there have been more than a few issues the last few years, which I feel end up like this in rumor for one reason. And I don't pretend this is the biggest critical thing in the district, but I do believe if the board had a curriculum committee, or if more curriculum and instruction decisions made by the superintendent and the principals were brought before the board ahead of time, then they would be on the public record, there would be documents related to them. This district did have a curriculum committee years ago, it was phased out, and I think it, I don't believe the board should make curriculum, I don't believe the board should implement curriculum, but I do believe that any changes in instruction and curriculum, one example would be the change in how the midterm exams are counted at the high school, which was changed really without consultation of the board or teachers a few years ago. And I'm not saying again that that's the biggest thing. I think that could be better resolved if it came before the board and there were an open discussion before. On a completely separate issue, trying to stay within my three minutes, you guys are going to be talking about bus routes. It does not directly affect any of my children, but I would say that we need more common sense. Looking at the wonderful report that you guys attached in your packet today, you see some towns have two miles, some towns have a mile and a half, some have less, particularly in high schools, and that some towns that have two miles actually pick up and bus all the kids and cluster stuff. So I would ask that you don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Don't let complete equality overrule common sense. So on that issue, I would have you use your common sense. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all the hours you spent volunteering in these positions as board of directors.
Anything else like to address the board?
My name is Tom Jagidenski. I live at 27 Brookley Grace. I believe kids should get more exercise. And walking is great, but there's a time and place for everything. Your current policy calls for five and six-year-olds to be walking up to a mile to school. You claim this is about 20 minutes. Obviously, none of you have ever walked a mile with a five-year-old. If a parent sent their child on a mile walk, there's a good chance they get a visit from Child Protective Services. You expect older kids to walk up to 40 minutes. Not bad if you're not carrying a backpack loaded with books, a band instrument, and sports equipment, and the temperature is at 85-plus like the beginning of this school year. This isn't walking, it's basic training. I'm sure at least one of you walked 10 miles to school every day in the snow, uphill both ways. I recently went back to clock my own school walk, and guess what? It wasn't as far as I remembered. I'm assuming the earth is shrinking. Kids shouldn't be arriving at school ready for a nap or absent because the weather makes walking impractical. Parents shouldn't have to be concerned about their kid's safety. It's time for you to listen to what parents are telling you and revise this policy. At the last meeting, you heard a presentation on testing results. It turns out that parents, students, and teachers are right. Our schools are overtesting. Any doubts were laid to rest when the administration presented a massive load of testing data that would have left Albert Einstein dazed and confused. The only thing worse than insufficient data is too much data. A teacher who tried to understand and use all this data would have little time for teaching. Testings are critically important if we want to continually improve our schools, but this is being carried to an extreme that's harmful. It's time to listen to what you're being told and eliminate unnecessary and redundant testing. We need to test less and create valuable time for more teaching. Finally, at the meeting, numerous slides showed that our schools failed to meet the goals you established. In many cases, things got worse. You didn't even react. If you don't take your goals seriously, why should the administration? I've attended board meetings for the last 10 years, and every year it's the same thing. Goals are set, goals aren't met, and you ignore the fact. This situation be fixed, but it would take a lot of work. At this point, there are more important things that need to be done. Do everybody a favor and stop this meaningless ritual. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board this evening?
Shannon Hartwell, 17 Berkeley. I'm here to discuss the transportation policy. You've heard of me last year many times about the policy. I think in order to give our children fair and equal education, that every child should be an eligible busser. I don't think they should have to wait until October 1st to get a ticket on the bus. I also think that your policy should allow for exceptions. The state guidelines allow for exceptions. Last year, I came to for an exception. I needed an exception. On September 10th, I had cancer and had to have surgery. I asked you to get my son on the bus 20 days earlier than the October 1st date for eligible buskers. We live 1.9 miles from Jonathan Law. You said no, no exceptions. Sometimes I get upset when I see things like a two-page letter about a parade, a 20-minute parade, but not one of you responded to my email last year when I asked you for help. Adults make mistakes, we all make mistakes. I just don't want this mistake to be made again from another parent or community member or child in our community that comes to you and asks for help. One thing that was good that came out of this was that my son learned a lesson. He learned that bureaucracy sometimes overrules integrity. Sometimes people can't do the right thing because of bureaucracy. I hope in the future you don't let bureaucracy again get in the way and allow exceptions. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board this evening?
Hi, good evening. Joanne Raffenberger. I live at 50 Greens Trade. I just wanted to talk about a couple of things that I noticed from tonight's packets, talking about the activity stipends. I'm looking over the packet, and I know you'll probably get to that maybe this evening, but I found some issues that I have. There are some titles in the teachers' contracts for what the stipends are named, and then something toward the middle schools have named it something else. Some of the issues that I have is that chorus at Harborside in the contract is for $1,849. Only Harborside has given that stipend to girls intramurals. And that the actual select chorus group at Harborside, the teacher that does that is getting $778. Also, there are STEAM at Harborside, which is the science club that includes the arts. The teachers there get $778. It's under some other name. The science club at East Shore Advisor gets $585. The jump rope club advisor at East Shore gets $778. So I think there's a discrepancy of the teachers that are providing after-school education versus jump roping, intramurals. I mean, maybe there should be, it should at least be equal. Also, there is some issue with the types of after-school activities that are offered. West Shore has a student council. Harborside does not have a student council, and the money there goes towards a synchronized sports program. There's a lot of discrepancies that I hope you guys will look at, and maybe when it comes time to teacher contracts, you'll look at that and maybe fix those discrepancies. Also, I found out there are certain days when there are early dismissals that the high schools don't get lunch. Middle school and elementary schools do, but the high schools do not get lunch served. So my son is a sophomore, and the coaches still ask the students to practice after school. And some have days he does get lunch, and some have days he doesn't, and he's not always sure which ones he does, and so then he's stuck some days. And Foreign really doesn't have anywhere you can go to get lunch. There's no McDonald's or Subway or somewhere where he can go and feed himself even if he had lunch. So he's kind of stuck without any food until I pick him up after practice. And I realize he does choose to play sport, but that's something I wonder if it could be explained better what days there's no lunch. And lastly, I did want to congratulate Milford Schools on the S-Back scores. I think compared to a lot of our parent towns, we did much better than those, better than Cheltenham, better than Stratford, better than Trumbull even. We were one point above Trumbull on average for reading our English. So this is all in our English course map, but we still have a ways to go. And we were even above Amity, so good job.
Anybody else like to address the board this evening?
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Lilly. I'm the one that started the petition about the parade. I would like first to say thank you for overturning the decision. You'll see a lot of smiling children's faces on that day, dressed up in their, of course, school-approved costume attire. What I would like to say is I'm a little put off on, you know, the superintendent's response to the letter. There's some points in here that she made that we never, we were never attacking the integrity of Milford School System. We were never questioning the love that those coaches have for our children. I love Milford School System. I relocated back to Milford. I was blessed to attend Milford Schools my whole entire life, and the school system, the teachers, the staff, the special education program, phenomenal. My only thing was, is as a parent, we were never even weighed in this decision. Nobody ever even asked our opinion, what we felt, if they were to be an alternative, nothing. It was just a letter or email sent home canceling something that I'd done when I was in schools for years and years and years, tradition after tradition, family member after family member, and it's just something I feel our kids should still be able to enjoy. Couple of years back, we had snow, and they canceled Halloween for quite a few weeks. Now, if they didn't have those school activity parade, the children would have went without it. And to some people, it might feel small, it's just Halloween, but if we start looking the other way for Halloween, what is it next? Thanksgiving, Christmas, no Merry Christmas, say Happy Holidays, all of this. These are our American traditions and our American culture, and we as a whole should be able to enjoy it, celebrate it, and have safe, family fun while doing it. Never meant to harm, offend, or discredit anybody. And if any of you have read my petition, never once, like I said, was the integrity of the teachers, the love of the teachers for our children, none of that was even mentioned. It was literally just bring back an American tradition, which is our annual Halloween parade that was always done at Milford Public Schools and was always a good turnout, where your teachers dressed up, the staff dressed up, everybody had a good time. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else would like to address the board this evening?
Pat Wallfall, 49 Crescent Drive. I too am here for the transportation issue. You know, I am a teacher, and I've worked in Milford for years, and I teach outside of district. I enjoy having students who are ready to learn. And as an educator with 20-plus years of experience, I would not like to have students who are coming to me having walked a mile and a half to school each day. Now, perhaps once in a while, that would be an okay kind of thing. To think of a scholar coming to school each day, having walked a mile and a half to school, and having had to prepare for the next day. So they've worked six and a half hours at home in the school day, and then they go So they've worked six and a half hours at home in the school day, and then they go home and have homework to do. Most of them have sports or outside activities, and then we're going to say, go home, also get a good night's rest, don't forget that shower, please do not forget that shower, and get up and walk a mile and a half to school is really asking too much of the kids that we as teachers love. We call them our kids. We have had this busing in the city for 30 years. We had it for 30 years. And then we save the money. I want to save the kids. I want to save the education. And I have been a proponent of that for years and years. It isn't about test scores. They're absolutely right. But test scores increase when kids are ready to learn. Teachers will have engaged students. So what I think is that we should go back and take a step back, and we should give back what we had, because as a learned woman, I can tell you, I walk the streets and there are not sidewalks. We can say from Google Earth that there are. There are not sidewalks. And this is not just about my child, because I can assure you, my child will get a ride to school. It's about all my other kids, all of the other ones that I worry about, and I would like you to worry about them too. It's not shoveled. There's no sidewalks. There are slippery leaves. It rains in Connecticut. You wouldn't know it from the drought lately, but it will rain. And when it does, and the children have to walk behind Margaret Egan Center, it will be a swamp. I don't know about the East Shore town, but please listen to your parents. They do. Thank you so much.
Anybody else would like to address the board this evening?
Good evening. My name is Deb McCann. I have two students in Riverside, and I have a son who's a freshman at law. I'm here to talk about two issues tonight. First, I want to commend Dr. Pieser on the letter today about the Halloween parade. I think it was a very well-written letter, and as a parent, I was saddened to see what had sort of blown up over the course of 24 hours with regards to the petition. I don't think that there was anyone who was mean-spirited behind the purpose of the petition. However, I agree that not all of the facts were known. I do know that at my child's school, there was not a tradition in the recent past of Halloween roads, and that was fine. I actually thought that the idea of having all the schools have a spirit day, and we were going to have pajama day, was a great idea, was a great alternative, goes away from the fear of everybody, and that seems like a perfect solution. Our PTA is planning a Halloween event for those of you who can come at night. And so I'm saddened to see that Milford once again made the national news and for such a negative connotation. And that makes me sad, and I'm really hopeful that we can find a way in the future to have a more constructive dialogue about some of these issues before it turns into what this issue unfortunately turned into and which I don't think was ever the intent of anyone involved. That's all I have to say on Halloween. The other issue I'm here to speak about is transportation policy. Our house is 1.97 miles from here. So my challenge to all of you on the board is, five, two. First, we can all meet on my front porch some morning and speak in, maybe November, maybe January, when it's dark, maybe snowy, maybe raining. Let's all meet, bring all of your stuff, bring your briefcase, bring your lunch, bring an instrument if you happen to have it, and let's all walk to law. And then let's see how we all feel when we get to law, and let's see if you're good for the dead, for learning, or perhaps if you play sports that afternoon or that night. Let's see how you feel having walked the almost two miles, the 1.97 miles. If that doesn't work, how about we take the 1.97 miles from this meeting law? Let's all walk together and try that, and let's see how that feels. I understand the arguments. It's been a rule for a number of years. It's history. We, kids need more exercise. I don't think this is the way to go about it. I think there are other things we can do to make sure our kids are active. I think that some of the policies that may have existed behind the two miles are, have changed. I know when I was in high school, I didn't have to take a bus. I looked for someone, I had, found a friend who had a car, and I got a ride, because no one wanted to be content on the bus. It doesn't work that way nowadays. You know? You can't, even kids who have licenses in high school, you can't drive with someone for a considerable length of time. So you're not talking about kids who are getting rides with other kids. And that may be a great policy. My son's not driving yet, so it's fine. You know, I'm not challenging that. All I'm saying is I think some of the thinking that went into that initial two-mile marker may have changed over the years, and so we definitely should revisit it. I mean, I really, I just think having a freshman who's involved in sports and watching him try to, you know, he's on the cross-country team, he runs about a three-mile run every day, to add a two-mile walk onto that and expect him to do well in all his classes and still be functioning at night, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me. So I would strongly urge you to consider. And the one other point I would say is there was a letter that was written to the Milford mayor where some parents had documented all the darkness times, and I would ask you to really look at that, because that, I thought they made great point. I mean, we're asking kids to walk the majority of the time when it's dark out in the morning. Now, for a 6'2" freshman, that might not be a safety hazard, but for a 14-year-old girl, it may be a whole different sentence. So I would strongly ask you to consider it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Thomas, 84 Thompson Street. I'm here to say to the five of you who voted to reconsider the walking distances, thank you, to the five of you who voted not to revisit it, take the walk yourself. Try it. Try it every day. If you can't do it today, try it tomorrow. I'm here to tell you that the sidewalks are not shoveled in the winter. My son, who's right here, Alex, stand up, please. Not a small child, almost hit by a truck last year, walking home in the street because the sidewalks were not shoveled. It's another issue I'm going to work on. Let's take care of the distances. It's a long distance. I don't know how many of you live within two miles of here. How many of you walked here tonight? I know you've probably got books, presentations, and information to bring, but that's what we're asking of our students. We're asking them to bring everything they need for that day to school with them that morning. And don't forget, if you leave house, your house, and you forget it, you've got to go back. Most of you have cars. You can drive back. Won't take you long. But if you're walking nearly two miles, it's going to take you a little longer. Just reconsider it. Times have changed. Many things have changed. If you're not willing to take the walk and try it yourselves, please don't ask our students to do it. It's just not right. It's not safe. It's not in the best interest of students. Please do what is right for the students. Do what's in their best interest. Exercise, yes, that's important, but not when you have to be somewhere every single day at the same time. You're not going to be at your best for exercise at 6:30 in the morning when you've got to be at school for 6:20. It's just not going to be that way every single day. You've got to reconsider, and please, please take a long, hard look at it. It shouldn't be about money. It should be about the students, their safety, their well-being. That will be reflected in their test scores. You'll see that. In two years, you can boast about that. You can put it on all of your information, if you want to run for Board of Ed again, that you helped bring up the test scores. It's worth it. Just please consider it. Thank you.
Susan Krasinski, 60 Crescent Drive. Glenn, I'm here to talk to you to reconsider the walking distances for the transportation policy. I sent each one of you a document with a letter with an outline of all these weather-related facts for last year, sunrises, weather conditions, days that the wind chill and the temperatures were below freezing last year. And there were a lot of days. We're asking these kids, my neighbor has been measuring her, weighing her daughter's backpack, it's 20 to 22 pounds every day, so we're asking these kids to walk up to two miles with a 20-pound backpack on their back at 6:00 in the morning. We're driving here tonight, it was twilight time, that's the time of the morning we're asking these kids to walk to school. In the wintertime, Milford does not do a very good job of plowing roads, shoveling sidewalks. Many sidewalks aren't shoveled, but even when they are, you think about it, these kids have to cross roads in those areas of plow. Not everyone plows the curb cut to get across the road. So we're asking these kids with a 20-pound backpack to climb over a pile of snow at 6:30 in the morning. We have conditions that are different than when we were growing up. There's texting, and people are driving. How many people do you see on their cell phones every day, every morning, every night on their way, rushing to work or rushing home from work? They're not paying attention to the kids, and the kids themselves aren't paying attention. They're texting as they're walking too. So we've got distracted walkers, distracted drivers, bad weather conditions. Board of Ed can't control how Milford clouds or shovels walks. That's out of your control. It's the city side. We're going to work on that with the mayor. We can get him to do something there. But I ask you to reconsider, think about that, think about the kids. Ask the administration for absentees. Pick a few dates that were bad last year and a few nice dates, and see how many absences there were. How many kids don't get to school on those bad weather days? And that's what I ask. Please reconsider it. Thank you.
Bob Thomas, 84 Thompson Street. A sophomore. And a freshman, both in Jonathan Law. They're both courtesy riders. Up until October 1st, we had to girdle. I had to drove four kids off my own street every day, two to school, and then my wife picked them up after school. These walking distances were set in the 50s. There were a lot less people in town, a lot less cars, a lot less traffic. The cars went slower. The two-mile walking distance, carrying that backpack is tough. I did carpentry. My back soared from just carrying my tools every day. Now they want them to walk two miles in the morning. It's dark, it's cold, they don't want to walk. By the time they do get to school, they're all tired. I would like to revisit it. I think it's a good idea. Like someone else stated, many of you live within two miles? Did you walk here tonight? No. All came in cars. So try the walk, like Deb McCann said, maybe from her house. 1.97. I'm 1.87. So it's a long walk. And one side of our street is on Surf. It's State Road. We took three weeks to get them to plow that off. The other side, there's no sidewalks. So trudging down the side of the street with traffic coming by, cars generally speed pretty fast on that road, like my wife said, my son almost got run over. He had to jump in the snow. He came home, he was soaked. And I would like you to revisit that. I think it would be safer for all our students in town. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Pastor, 78 Hill Street. I'm here on the transportation issue. Thank you to everyone with your testimonies tonight, a lot of informational stuff and emotional stuff, and all valid. Bob Thomas just mentioned that rules were made in the 50s. Times have changed since then. Now we're asking our kids to walk 30 to 35 minutes. I actually, when I saw this come out, I took the walk. It was a nice day. It wasn't a bad walk, okay? Had a beautiful afternoon, a two-minute afternoon. Everybody's mentioned the in-the-dark, the length of the walk, dealing with the elements. I'm not going to rehash all that. I want to talk about the increasing demands on students today compared to back then. Okay? Things are different. I was bused to law from the same neighborhood I live in, okay? And that was back then. It served me well. The intersection at Silver Sands, stop and shout. There's no stoppage of traffic at the intersection, ever. So the kids are forced to pay attention to what goes in and out of that parking lot as they walk by. My son is 1.9 miles, so if he chose a different route, it puts him over the two-mile limit. So he doesn't really have an option. From a budgeting standpoint, there are voluntary after-school programs provided for middle schools, and they're budgeted for, but we're not taking care of our students who have to go to school. Putting a dollar amount on our children's education and safety seems a little unreasonable to me. My wife is an educator in another district. She understands certainly the importance of students being mentally and physically prepared to learn. I'm a firefighter, and I own my own business, so I can speak from the safety and budgeting side of this. Safety and education are things worth budgeting for. I just ask everybody to change with the times like they have to, if anything else. That's it.
Anybody else care to address the board this evening? We know seeing none. We'll move on to the rest of our agenda. Chair's report. I just want to let the board know that I have a meeting planned this weekend with the MGAAT committee chairperson regarding the airing of our board meetings. We'll all report back on that at our next business meeting. I also want to remind board members that we have two more meetings as a group after this. We have our meeting on the 26th of October, which is our COW meeting, and our last business meeting will be November 9th. I just want to, you know, remind board members that our business meetings, these are our business meetings where we discuss and deliberate on our agenda items amongst ourselves and with members of staff and administration that are participating in our meeting. And I'm just going to ask everybody to try to stay focused on the last few things we need to wrap up before the end of our term. We still have some, you know, important issues that we need to address, and we have tonight, there are two more meetings to do it. So everybody try to stay focused on the, and with that, I'll move on to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Mr. Whiskeman.
I attended ACE's board meeting this past Thursday. The item of note was that they did pass the regional calendar, and I believe a copy of that has been provided. My understanding is that for Milford, this should be adequate. We have some flexibility. Our calendar, which we will work on later, probably in January or something like that, will be required to conform with the parameters of that regional calendar, but I believe there's sufficient flexibility there for us to accommodate our needs, so that it shouldn't be an issue or a problem for us. I just want to let you know that that regional calendar is now in effect, and that's for next year. That's my report about ACE's.
Thank you, Mr. Whiskeman. Other committee reports, liaison reports, I'm sorry. Okay, I will just briefly report that I did attend the first PTA council meeting in September. It was the first one of the year, so there were a lot of new representatives, and I had a lot of questions, and we had some discussions, so that was great. And we meet again this week, right, Mrs. Thomas? It kind of crept up on me. So it's a great, it's a great group of parents, very dedicated, so I enjoy doing that. And that's all I have to report on, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Pieser.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. The first actual report and update is on transportation, and Mr. Ruttatelli is going to take the lead on that. He will not only provide a report like he does annually, but then he will also speak to the charts that have been given to him by the Board of Education relative to examination of different transportation rules.
Thank you, Dr. Pieser. This is Glenn and members of the board. As Dr. Pieser said, we come to you each year, beginning of the school year, and just give you an update on transportation as to where we are, the basic numbers. So we'll do that, and then we'll move into some of the new issues. I note that there are three board members that have probably not heard a majority of the information that's in the package, because a lot of the decisions that we're going to be talking about tonight were made in 2013, and there are some new board members. So a lot of this will be historical data, but we'll go through it pretty quickly. So, and with me tonight, of course, is our transportation coordinator, Judy Mescolotidis. She's tending to the computer, and she told me not to say that she's the transportation expert, so I'm not going to say she's the expert, but she knows an awful lot about transportation in Milford Public Schools. So, Judy, thank you. So we'll get right into it. Milford Public Schools provides transportation to 4,000 students, over 4,000 students daily. By law, we transport, obviously, from our 14 public schools, three parochial schools, three technical and vocational schools, and several out-of-district special education placements. placements. We currently utilize 66 buses and vans. We have 125 bus runs and over 1,000 bus stops. In your packages, we've provided you with a tremendous amount of statistical data, numbers, and things like that, so we've kind of summarized them here in the package, but everything that we've talked about is kind of extrapolated in the information that we gave you in your package, as well as the board's current transportation policy. Okay. I just want to make note that tonight's presentation deals with regular education transportation only. The special education transportation is very specialized, and that's handled by the pupil personnel services department on an individual basis. So we're talking about just regular education transportation. So some background information, the current cost per bus is by contract $46,590, and next year, because we'll be talking about what if next year, that is $47,985, and we're going to refer to it in round numbers as $48,000 per bus. Remind you of the school start times and the 30-minute window. That's a very important factor, the 30-minute window. Milford Public Schools operates on a tiered system. Each bus does two or three runs. There are some that can only do one, and we'll explain those in the presentation, but for example, ideally, a bus would do a high school run, a middle school run, and an elementary run, or a middle school run, an elementary school run, and then another elementary school run. We achieve maximum efficiency when we're utilizing the least amount of buses within the allotted 30-minute window. The, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. So again, routes, the routes that we build are designed to achieve the maximum number of tiers per bus with the maximum number of students on each bus, but knowing that our constraining factor is the 30-minute window. And that 30-minute window, we have to take into account the distance that the bus needs to travel, where it originates from, and where it has to go to, the number of stops that it has to make, the loading times, the age of the students. Obviously, it takes kindergartners and first graders a lot longer to board and unboard the buses than the high school students do, and we also have to take into account traffic Again, we are most efficient when our buses run those three tiers per bus per day, and we took down the average cost. When we're able to run three tiers on a bus, that bus, each tier costs us $15,530. When a bus runs two tiers, each tier costs us more, it costs us $23,295, and when a bus only can run one tier, it costs us the full amount, $46,500. So now I'd like to go into some historical perspective as to where we are. So over the last three and a half years, transportation has been a focus of the Milford Board, going back to the previous board, not yours, and then continued over the past couple of years. In 2012, 2013, the board cut $200,000 from transportation and directed administration to find efficiencies and savings. Administration, at that time, we achieved $165,000 in savings of the $200,000, but the board sought more. They sought greater efficiencies, and so in April 2013, the board at that time hired a company called Transportation Advisory Services, or TAS, who's a transportation consultant, but a transportation expert here on the East Coast, and they did a comprehensive review of our entire transportation system. For the most part, TAS came back to us and reported to the board in September of 2013. For the most part, found that Milford Public Schools provided efficient, safe transportation, but they did make some specific recommendations. In November of 2013, administration developed a plan, presented it to the board, and on November 12th of 2013, the board approved the plan and directed administration to implement that plan for the 1415 school year. The major components of the plan, Durham, and some of these were designed strictly for cost savings, others were designed for efficiencies, et cetera. But Durham was to install a diesel tank on their property, which would allow us to buy fuel at a cheaper price by taking advantage of the city's locked-in bid price each year, as opposed to Durham buying it at the retail pumps and then rebating us a dollar, et cetera. So that was one plan. We were to review and revise the transportation policy to ensure fairness, consistency, and conformance, and the board under, well, I'll get to it, we'll explain it further in the presentation. We implemented a pilot voluntary opt-out program. The board, okay, I'll get to it in the presentation. I'm getting ahead of myself here. We were to enact a pilot opt-in program, which allows otherwise ineligible students to receive transportation if there's room on the bus and along with other considerations. The board directed us to reduce and consolidate the number of bus runs and the number of bus routes, and at that time, they asked us to identify students who were being transported despite living within the walking distance guidelines, and to examine whether a safety reason existed, and if not, to eliminate the transportation. And so now I'm going to go through and just further explain very briefly each of those major components of the plan. So Durham did install that diesel tank in October of 2014. In addition, we worked out of an arrangement with the city where the gasoline-fired buses now fuel up at the pumps. This allows us to buy all of our fuel on the city's locked-in price, and you can see the tremendous savings that this has achieved. In 2013, 2014, we spent over $298,000 on fuel, and in 1415, after implementing these plans, we spent $196,000, $297,000, huge savings, a 34% savings. So that was a real win-win. The transportation policy, the board asked us to bring back a completely revamped and revised policy. The board looked at it over several meetings and discussed it at length. But the policy that is now in place accurately reflects the current transportation practices that we have. It clearly articulates the rules that govern transportation in the district, and ensures fairness and consistency, and it conforms to all state laws and State Department of Education and Transportation guidelines. The voluntary opt-out program, this was, the thought was, if we could get some students who they knew they were going to drive, or knew they had a ride, or whatever, to opt out, we would be able to take students off of our bus rolls and possibly achieve efficiency. We sent letters to everybody that people opt out. That year, in the pilot year, only 34 students responded, and then some returned, because legal counsel told us that we couldn't permanently keep anybody out. What we determined was that there was very little response, there really was no efficiency gained by it, and we did not continue that this year. The opt-in program, this is, this allows for students who are, who are otherwise ineligible for transportation to apply for transportation, and if there's a seat available on the existing bus, and the bus does not need to deviate from the route, the students can get on that existing bus. The program begins on October 1st, and lots of people have asked why, and the fact of the matter is, throughout the entire month of September, we were adjusting routes, some routes that had too many students on it, we're splitting buses, so we really don't have a good handle on the number of students we have on each bus, and how many are actually riding the bus until mid-September. And so in the policy, October 1st is the date, and really it would be difficult for us to move that date up, because we don't know how many students we're going to have on those buses, and what the routes actually look like, the final routes, until mid-September. This just gives you an idea this year of how many students take advantage of the opt-in program, and you can see at each school, but there's a total of 43 students district-wide who are in the opt-in program. The board asked us to reduce and consolidate the number of stops, number of stops and routes, and what TAS found is that Milford Public Schools, when they examined all of the routes and all of the stops, they told us that we were far above the average in the number of stops that each bus was making. They pointed out to us that industry standards say that too many and frequent stops create traffic and safety issues, and so they told us that consolidating stops would increase safety and efficiency, but the important thing to remember is that safety has to be first, and so we didn't consolidate a route without examining it for safety first. You know that we hired a traffic safety expert that looked at all the stops and all of the routes, so that we ensured that before we did anything, that it was safety first. So here's the, I'm sorry, here's the numbers from 2013, 14. This was before the changes that took place, before the consolidations, and then the numbers for 1415, which were after the changes took place. We're going to give you a snapshot of what 1516 looks like, but we can't compare that because of the reconfiguration and the redistricting. It's not apples to apples, and so we're giving you a snapshot of 1314, which was before, 1415, which was after the changes, and the effect that the consolidations had. So the number of bus runs, the numbers are all there, and they're extrapolated on the information that we gave you in the package, but in 1314, we had a total of 148 bus runs. In 1415, that was reduced to 36, a reduction of 12 bus runs, or 8.1%. Number of bus stops in 1314, a total of 1,694. That was reduced in 1415 to 1,320, a difference of 374 bus stops, or a reduction of 22.1% of the bus stops. Number of students bused, now this is not all because of changes that were made, but some of it is due to declining enrollment, but just the raw numbers, in 1314, we bused 5,032 students. In 1415, we bused 4,616, a difference of 416 students, or 8.3%. This is just a snapshot of where we are today, the runs for 1516. We have, currently have 126 bus runs. We currently have 1,005 bus stops, and we're busing 4,188 students. So you can compare that to where we were in 1415 and 1314, but it's not apples to apples because of the reconfiguration. Also, this current year, these numbers include that we have additional buses because of the commitment that was made to fifth grade grandfathering. We have two additional buses going to Jonathan Law, one going to Jonathan Law and one to West Shore because of the North Tuck Avenue construction project, and we have one additional bus, to Boys and Girls Club, to accommodate the accommodation for the students that were redistricted from JFK and Pumpkin to Mathews and the Meadow Side. This is the number of buses, and this is, you know, this is where, you know, the bottom line is, as far as dollars go. In 1314, we had 53 buses. In 1415, we reduced that by two and a half, but the previous year, when we cut $165,000, we had already cut two and a half buses from there. Currently in 1516, we're at 48.5 buses. Again, you can't compare it for the reasons on the previous page, but you know from your budget that we anticipated savings because of the reconfiguration. We knew we were going to need less buses because of reconfiguration, redistricting. Okay. And the last piece of that, the major components of the plan, was to remove non-eligible students from riding the bus in the 1415 school year. By TAS, TAS brought to our attention that there were many students that they found who were inside the walking distance, who were being transported, and they told us that we should examine that, and so we identified who those students were who were being bused despite living within the walking distance. The board hired a traffic safety expert who went out and examined each and every one of those residences to see whether there was a safety reason or other extenuating circumstances which would dictate the transportation being continued, and those that were not, the board directed us to remove them from transportation, and they were reclassified as ineligible for transportation, and there were 260 students who were affected by that change. So just to recap, administration has implemented the board's transportation plan and has achieved the board's desired goals, which were to ensure fairness, consistency, and conformance to the policy, to recognize efficiencies resulting in the reduction of the number of bus stops and bus runs, and to reduce transportation costs. So the next part is where we are now. And just to give you an idea, on any given year, the Transportation Office at the beginning of the year addresses somewhere between 175 and 225 parent questions, complaints, and appeals. In 1415 school year, all these changes took place, the Transportation Office addressed over 750 questions, complaints, and appeals from parents. And in this 1516 year, we've addressed almost 500 questions and complaints, but most of these were not due to the changes that were made, but more because all new bus routes were built this year because of the reconfiguration and the redistricting. So most of them were, you know, what bus stop did we go to? My bus is too full, things like that, and things had to be adjusted, because these were all new elementary school bus routes this year. Okay? So as a result of transportation being eliminated from non-eligible students and bus stop routes consolidated, last year, parents came to the board and raised questions about the walking distance guidelines. The board, at the July meeting, requested that administration present a report tonight addressing two specific scenarios. One scenario was to reduce the high school walking distance from two miles down to one and a half, and to leave the middle school where it is at one and a half, and leave elementary where it is at one. The second scenario was to reduce the high school walking distance from two to one and a half, also to reduce the middle school walking distance from one and a half down to one, and to leave the elementary walking distance at one. So both of these scenarios, the elementary school district at one mile, you did not ask us to look at. So elementary numbers would stay exactly the same. I just point out, it's kind of a given, but the transportation policy is in conformance of all federal and state laws and regulations, and we do follow the education, transportation guidelines. According to your policy and consistent with the state guidelines, I just gave you the definition of walking distance, which is pretty self-explanatory, but it's in your policy, and I just wanted to reiterate it. We already know our walking distance guidelines are two miles, one and a half, and one mile. So the first thing we did is to take a look at what other school districts are doing, and so we put out a survey through my professional organization, which is the Connecticut Association of School Business Officials, or otherwise known as CASBO, and we received a pretty good response. Normally, out of 160-some odd school districts, on a survey, if we get 20, we're doing good. In this particular case... In this particular case, between the responses that we got, and in some cases, we went onto websites to look at districts that are close by to us that didn't respond to the survey. So between the survey results and going on to school district websites, we were able to determine what other school districts' transportation policies are with regard to walking distance guidelines. And I provided in your package the complete listing, and so it's extrapolated there, but in a condensed version, 32 of the 55 districts that responded, or 58%, are the same as Milford. 10 districts, or 18% of the one and a half miles is the maximum walking distance, and their high schools are at one and a half, middle schools ranged between one and one and a half, and the elementaries were one mile. There were nine districts, or 16%, that had a one-mile max. And there were four districts, you can see them in your package, they're very rural districts, who bussed all of their students, and that was 7% of the districts. Just gives you an idea where other school districts are. And again, all of those, the different districts, are listed in your package. So, a few notes. When reviewing how many more students we'd bust under each scenario, we use the residents of our current students. Obviously, the actual residences are going to vary from year to year, but for our comparison tonight, we use the current students and where they would be within, if we were to change the policy. It's not as simple as saying we have X number of new students, and so we'll just divide it by, you know, how many buses we have. It's where they're located. And so, we physically plotted each of the students on the map to determine where they are, and to look at the current bus routes, and to determine whether or not we would need another bus run based upon that 30-minute window and the conditions of where those particular students are. And I just remind you again, because we're going to refer to it in this section, the cost per bus for next year is around figures $48,000. So, first scenario was to look at the high schools and lower the walking distance from two miles down to one and a half. And we broke this into three pieces. One is Milford Public Schools, one is the private schools in Platte Tech, and the third one is Trumbull Boag, and how it affects each one. And so, currently, under the two-mile ridership, there's 468 students at law, 454 at foreign, for a total of 922. If we were to lower the walking distance guidelines to one and a half miles, there would be an additional 66 students who would be bussed to law, there would be an additional 105 students who would be bussed to foreign, for a total number of 171. Based upon where those students are and our current bus runs, we estimate that we would need an additional, up to an additional, six runs. We've given you the cost breakdown, and there's a range. And the range is because if we need a new bus run, and it can do three tiers, then that bus, that run, is approximately $16,000. If we need a new bus run, but that bus can only do two tiers for whatever reason, then that cost per bus run is $24,000. So there's a range. So we've given you the range. So for six additional bus runs, the range would, the cost, the estimated cost, would be approximately $96,000 up to $144,000. For Laurelton Hall and Platte Tech, we can see we currently have 186 riders between the two schools. If we added one and a half miles, or if we lowered to one and a half miles, we'd only pick up four students going to Laurelton.
Excuse me, Mr. Chelley, if we could keep down the chatter so you can hear, please. Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
That's okay. So an additional 16 students, we estimate we would need one additional bus run based upon where those Platte students are. And Platte buses and private school buses, because if there are times, and because of the far distances that the buses have to go to pick up the students, are only able to do two tiers. So that bus, that additional run, would cost us $24,000. The last piece that's affected is the Trumbull Boag bus. And currently, we have 25 students that were responsible by law to transport to Trumbull High School. We have seven designated locations throughout the city where we pick those students up. The locations are picked each year based upon where the students live, and the student cannot walk further to the designated location than the walking distance guidelines in our policy. So right now, those 25 students can walk up to two miles to a designated location. So we have seven. A couple of years ago, we had five based upon where the students were, but we currently have seven now. This bus starts at 6:00 a.m. Actually, 5:59 is the first pickup time for these students. The bus, because Trumbull is on the west of Milford, northwest of Milford, the bus starts on the east side of town, picks that, it's one student up at 5:59 a.m., and then makes its way through the city to the locations. Last stop is at Jonathan Law, and then it goes on to Trumbull Boag. Based upon the current students that are enrolled, if we were to lower the walking distance guidelines to one and a half miles, we would need to add three additional locations throughout the city. And that's not possible. We can't ask students to come, to be at a bus stop any earlier than 5:59 in the morning. And likewise, on the opposite end, that student that's being picked up first on the east side of town is the last one to be dropped off at the end of the day at 3:35. And so, you can't, we cannot fit, we can't fit any more runs in and still get them to Trumbull on time. So absolutely, we would have to add another Trumbull Boag bus, and the cost of that bus is $48,000. And the Board will recall, some members of the Board will recall, when the Board originally cut the $200,000, one of the ways that we saved money was to reduce from two Trumbull Boag buses. We used to pick up every Trumbull Boag student virtually at their home, or very close to their home, and there were two buses. So our consolidate, one of the things to save money at that time was to reduce it to one bus and to go to designated locations throughout the city, still within the walking distance guidelines, and still subject to hazardous conditions that are placed on the walking routes. So, the summary for lowering the high schools from two miles to one and a half. Milford Public Schools would cost between $96,000 and $144,000. Private and technical schools would be $24,000, and the Boag bus would be $48,000, for a range of $168,000 to $216,000 to lower the high school guidelines. Okay. So the next was to look at the middle schools. And because on both scenarios, you're lowering the high school, only one scenario are you lowering the middle school. So, we looked at reducing the middle school walking distance guidelines from one and a half miles down to one mile. And you can see, we put it all on one sheet. You can see the total number of students that are currently being bussed, 1,268. If we lowered it to one mile, there would be 63 additional students. The estimated costs of the run, and this is, I'll try and explain this the best I can. The asterisk states that current students can be accommodated on the current runs, but this may not be the case in the future. And it may not be the case next year. And so, taking the conservative route, we're not saying that we would need an additional run per school, but we're saying that we need a placeholder. We need to have some dollars there, because the potential exists for the need to pick up these students. And so, there's, you know, we totaled the maximum that we anticipate that we would need for the middle schools would be two and a half buses, or two and a half runs, which would equate to between $40,000 and $72,000 to lower the middle schools from one and a half down to one. And so, summary of scenario one, which again was reduce the high school, leave the middle school alone, and leave the elementary school alone. You'd have approximately 187 new riders, seven, up to seven new bus runs, and one new Boag bus, for an estimated cost of up to $216,000. The walking, the summary for scenario two, which we'd get in was lower high school, lower middle school, leave elementary school alone. You'd have approximately 250 new riders on middle school and high school. You'd have seven, up to seven new high school bus runs, up to two and a half new middle school bus runs, and one new Boag bus. For a total, high school, again, the range for the high school, this is just a recap, but $168,000 to $216,000, and the middle school cost $40,000 to $72,000, for a total of, total estimated cost, if you were going to do scenario two, of up to $288,000. That's the numbers scenario, both the numbers of students and the dollar amounts. Just a couple more slides on hazardous conditions. And then, of course, we're available, Judy and I, to answer the questions that you have. But hazardous conditions, as you know, students living inside the walking distance guidelines are transported if there's a hazardous condition, which is defined in the Board policy, if it exists on the walking route. Those hazardous conditions in the Board's policy generally follow the Connecticut State Department of Education transportation guidelines, but they're adjusted slightly for local The, parents have raised concerns about things like weather, the time of day, drivers speeding, people on cell phones. And we know that those conditions exist. There's, obviously, there's no question about that. But I point out to the Board that these conditions exist for all students, regardless of whether they're walking to the bus stop, whether they're waiting at a bus stop, or whether they're walking to school. They exist, these same conditions exist for things like weather, speeding drivers. They exist for students who are going to be still walking under the one-mile or one-and-a-half-mile guidelines. The one difference is, it'll be less of a walk, but they're still walking over snowpiles when there's snow in the winter. They're still walking in the rain. And, you know, those drivers that aren't going to obey the law still exist in the one-mile range that they do in the two-mile range. And so, if the Board were to accept that these conditions, accept these conditions and consider them hazardous under your policy, you'd have no other alternative but to transport every student from their home, because a hazardous condition would exist. I just want to, I'm not going to even go into this, but in your Board policy, there is a apparent responsibility that's attached to all transportation getting to school. And I just refer that to you, it's in your policy, and you can read it. But there is, there is student, I'm sorry, apparent responsibility that's attached to all school transportation.
Is that taken from the state guidelines?
It is. Yes, it is. And a final note, this is a financial matter for the Board, and obviously, it will affect the 2016-2017 budget. The Board is very much aware that the Board of Finance weighs in on your budget, and the Board of Alderman has a final say in your budget. But there's going to be, if there's a change, and that's, we're not taking a position on it, but if there's a change, there will be a dollar amount attached to it. And we pretty much estimate it to you where we believe that dollar amount will be. So with that, I will be quiet and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. DeRosa.
My comment, obviously, you know, it's easy to equate this to dollars, but when you're talking about parents that are in scenarios and neighborhoods that due to the conditions or due to the environment, such as no sidewalks, or unpaid roads, or, you know, the driver issue is the driver issue and so forth, we can't stop that. But it almost seems to me like this is, it's a city issue, not a board issue. And I make that statement, the fact that if money's going to be spent, it should be putting in sidewalks. It should be doing something along those lines, and either the Board or the school system should be able to go back to the City Works, or the Mayor, or whoever else, and listen. Hazard to hazard. And we've done what we can from a policy point and following state statute, but conditions are conditions, and it's your responsibility, because you're the one that paves the roads, you're the one to create the roads, you're the one to create the sidewalks. You need to take that on. Because if I'm looking at these numbers, we're talking, what is it, almost a half million dollars? I think that's the number that equate, or 200-something thousand.
288.
But still, that's a big chunk. It's a big chunk that we got to find the money for, or we have to expect you to go back and say, cancel something, make something more efficient for the sake of lives for the children. And I know I made this statement a year ago, because I remember bringing this issue up last November, October. It's going to take one issue, one incident. It might be one of the parents that are sitting in this room here, it might not be one of these parents, it might be someone else at home listening or reading the paper. And then we're going to have a lawsuit. And it's going to be more than the $265,000. It's going to be more than time spent putting in sidewalks. There's going to be more time spent and the money, whether we bond it or not, to put in those environments and make the city more safe, because there's conditions that we can't, at this current point, equate or protect ourselves from. And to me, I think that's the issue. If we equate it to financial issue, then we're putting a value on a child's life. And I, for one, am not going to do that. So I think something has to be done, and going back to City Works or the Mayor and say, "Listen, you're in charge of the city. This is your responsibility. It's not a Board responsibility. We're at your disposal. And we can only pay for so much. It's going to go in the master budget anyways, it's going to come out of the same coffer anyways. What are you going to do about it? And what can you do about it? Taxes are going to go up, taxes are going to go up, but make sure it's spent on a well-defined issue. So parents' issues are addressed and there are met." Because this is, like I said, I mean, I may be here in November, I may not, but I'll voice it again. It's going to take one incident. Could have been that child sitting right there. And a parent could have, Mr. or Mrs. Thomas could have come in this room and said, "Listen, I warned you last year, but I lost my child." Because you had to walk through North Dakota Avenue or Egan Center, wherever, you know, from where they live. That, to me, I don't want to be put in that situation. So I'm asking you, as a Chief Operation Officer, to get together with Dr. Fieser and Mr. Probst to say, "Listen, what can we go back to the city with?" Because to me, I think that's where the real issue is. And we can look and say, "Okay, make every child a bus rider." What's going to be a cost of that? We haven't asked for that option, but there's obviously going to be a cost to that. And, you know, how far are we bringing? We're bringing, you know, we're not back in the '70s and '80s anymore. You know, enrollment's going down, costs are going up. So we're all trying to create efficiencies where we can, but this is not one efficiency. But this is not one efficiency I'm willing to, to stand behind. Um, so I'm gonna ask you from my perspective, from my request, that you, I'd like to hear what they have to say. Why aren't sidewalks in these areas? Why aren't they better plowed? Why aren't these issues being addressed? Because it seems like they're complaining to the board, but they're not, there's no voice to the city. Or that's really where the issue is. And we're being defaulted, and we have to pay the price for it. I might be wrong, I may be totally off on left field on this, but, you know, that, that's my, my, my comment.
Well, the, the, the one thing that I will say is, onto your policy. If a hazardous condition exists, and, and they're very well-defined, then that student is transported. If, if, if there are, and, and I would submit to you that if there's a, um, you know, if there's an issue of sidewalks not being, whether there is or there isn't. And we know that every winter, there's a number of people that don't shovel their sidewalks. We know that, and then they're, you know, that, that's a law enforcement issue. But there's, there, there's still going to be a number of people within that one mile range that don't shovel their sidewalks, and we're still expecting those students to walk to school. It's, um, I, I, all, all I'm saying is, if, if a hazardous condition exists, as defined in your policy, those students are bused, whether they're inside or outside the walking distance guidelines.
Following the state statute.
Yes, and following the state transportation guidelines.
So I don't, if I could interject, I don't, I've seen a lot of sidewalk replacement going on lately in Milford, and, uh, I believe there's a lot of grant money that is going towards repair and, and addition of sidewalks. But I'm not hearing parents talking about sidewalks or not sidewalks. I'm hearing them say simply that two miles is too far. Um, the, the plowing of sidewalks is diff, is one thing. But let me ask you a question, Mr. Richatelli. I heard one parent mention walking through Marguerite and Center. Now, that is, my understanding, that is not considered, that's not what you've designated as the safe walking route, is that correct?
That's correct.
So there's a sidewalk, I, I am recalling this from our transportation audit, so from the Rivercliff, uh, neighborhood, there is a continuous sidewalk along some of the route that gives children a safe walking route on that sidewalk to West Shore, for instance.
Correct. The, the, um, the pathways that are behind Marguerite and Center, we don't recommend that students use those. So where there's a designated walking route, and we deem it to be a safe walking route, it, it is around Edgemont and, um, down Walden, I think. But, um, those, right now, those students, because of the new, new cavity of construction, there's nobody walking there now.
So, um, and our, and our policy clearly defines the parameters, uh, for instance, where there, the parameters that would qualify for a student as a haz, a hazard, a hazardous driver, or some, you know, hazard bus rider, um, in terms of when there's the number of, um, cars that drive on the street, the, whether there's a sidewalk or not. I mean, there's some, some streets that are not very highly traveled, that don't have sidewalks. My children walked to their elementary school, there are no sidewalks on my street, it's a small street, and, um, they were considered walkers. But on a more busy street, if there's not a sidewalk, those children would be on a bus, correct? Under the guideline?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not hearing, I, I don't, I don't personally believe that the city's putting in more sidewalks is necessarily going to, um, I think if anything, it will make more people eligible for the bus, as, as opposed to less people eligible for the bus, because it may create, um, a safe walking route for some students that are now on a bus.
Vice versa, from what you said.
Correct, right, yes, yeah, right. So, um, I mean, that's, that's my take on it, um, is, is that, I'm, I think, for me, the issue is more, some of the things that I've heard tonight in terms of the, the, the length of the walk, the carrying the backpack, you know, that kind of thing. Any other? Uh, Mrs. Casey.
Uh, to Mr. Richatelli, do you have any idea what it might cost to transport all the students?
We, we, we looked at that, we looked at it last year, um, when, when this issue came up, and we took a cursory look, and it was prior to the, um, elementary reconfiguration, which has changed things. Um, but we estimated at that time, uh, between eight hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars to us, all students. I think that would probably be a little bit less now because of the elementary reconfiguration, but, wild, wild guess, I would say probably about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Mrs. Federico, does your hand up?
Yes, you did, um, a question to Mr. Richatelli, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have to ask this, I'm sure this is well-covered territory from two years ago, but I was not on the board at the time. Um, the bus, the second bus that would be added for Trumbull vo-ag, is that a full-size bus? Can, can we do a smaller bus for less money?
The buses, the buses that are running right now, they're full, they're, it's a full-size bus. A smaller bus, the only thing that would actually save on would be approximately ten dollars just a day, um, but then the gasoline would be a little bit cheaper. They could, but they, and those buses were high school students, we would probably get a third bus, because they only take about ten to fifteen students.
Okay.
So, depending on where they are.
I think we had twenty-six.
Twenty-six. I, I don't know exactly, some of those buses, I don't know how many are on those buses, honestly.
But the, but the smaller buses cost us, they take less children, but they cost us
Ten dollars a day.
Almost the same. It's not, it's a negligible change.
I mean, because I think the number added was like seven students, I think.
You know, it's, it's, like, currently it's seven stops, seven satellite stops that we have. Then it would be additionally three more stops.
Three more stops, okay.
Adding those three more stops, so we added a second bus. We would still have to add a second bus, and if we put the kids on it, it would be a very minimal change, um, cost savings, if you had a small bus or a large bus.
Okay.
It's ten dollars a day.
Okay. And I'm just gonna ask, there's no way to do like a van or something, you know, even smaller than that?
Probably fifteen dollars a day savings. If you, if you would think that, those buses would need a lot more money, but they're, they're not. They're all about the same price, they're in the two hundred and thirty dollars to two hundred and fifty dollar range.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Great question, though, too. What's that, I said, good question.
Okay, thanks. Um, I mean, for me, on this issue, the two miles is too far, period. Um, and I realize, you know, some of the parents talking tonight have talked about weather and backpacks, and I understand that whether you're walking a quarter mile, half a mile, uh, two-thirds of a mile, you're carrying a backpack and you're gonna have to deal with money. I think the point is, when you're walking a distance that's forty minutes already for an adult, and then you add the backpack, and then you add the weather, and then you add that you're, you know, dealing with a thirteen or fourteen-year-old boy or girl, you're, you're talking about a fifty or sixty-minute walk easily, and I think that's where, you know, parents are feeling it's too much. And I think, um, even on the middle school side, which we haven't talked much about, you're talking about a thirty-minute walk, and then you do the same thing, you add the backpack, you add the weather, and, um, you add the fact that now you're dealing with a eleven-year-old child, um, and that, that walk's gonna, gonna increase from thirty minutes to forty or fifty. So for me, it's about the time, you know, and certainly the safety's a, a concern, too. Um, but for me, the walking distance is just too far.
Question.
Yes, Mr. Selly.
Uh, in reference to the tiers, the three tiers, each bus route has, uh, optimally three tiers. It's a elementary, and middle, and a high school tier, and the addition, or, or thereabouts. And the additional two and a half tiers that we were talking about, could you clarify that for me?
Sure, um, if we, let's, well, let's find a page here. For instance, let's give you a, um, I'm on page thirty-four, or slide thirty-four.
Slide thirty-four, page seventeen.
The, um, if we, we'll, we'll just take East Shore. There would, right, there would be an additional twenty-four students. Where they currently reside, we could, as, as it is now, with the curb routes that we have, the number of students that are on those buses, um, and where these kids reside, we could fit them onto our existing buses.
Okay.
But, we can't guarantee that that's going to be the case next year. And so we put kind of a placeholder, we're not saying that we're gonna need a full run. We're saying, put a placeholder for dollars.
Potential for next year, if.
Correct. That's why we, we put a point five. Same thing at West Shore, um, and the same thing at the private schools. So you may not need one and a half new runs, uh, but those, those are placeholders.
Those are placeholders for next year, in case of.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in agreement with Mrs. Federico, and a lot of the parents out here, is they're, have concerns about the, the times with, right now, when I get, I have a hard time getting up, it's still dark out, you know, and having to walk with a twenty-pound pack on my back to school, two miles, four miles and a half, or whatever. That's, in my opinion, just from my standpoint, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. Um, it's, it's, um, I mean, granted, when I grew up, I didn't have that, I, I was a buster. Although I was supposed to be a walker, I was a buster. The, uh, the, the, the walk itself is a workout, you know, I think about that twenty-pound pack reminds me of my days in the army, and it was just, you know, with that heavy pack and going for those walks and those marches at three o'clock in the morning, it just, you know, it, it doesn't bring, bring pleasant memories. But, as students, you wanna be fresh, you don't wanna be tired. And they don't, you know, and I can understand that the, uh, and I see the, the, the point of view from the parents and where they are. And, um, I think that's something we should really need to consider.
Other questions? Mr. DeRosa.
I'm sorry, Earl, did you have?
I, I called on you, Mr. DeRosa.
Uh, through you to Mr. Richatelli, when you say that it's placed on, what, what could make that change?
I'm sorry?
The place on, what, what could make that change?
Next year.
Like a whole influx of students coming to Milford?
No, but you could have a student, you could have one student that's not near any other bus run, and you have to go up and pick up that student. We would, we would adjust runs, um, but, there, the, the potential exists that you would need an additional run. And so we put a placeholder there just for purposes for tonight, for coming up with a dollar amount.
So the twenty-four students are the existing twenty-four students and where they reside, but that, that number and where they reside may very well change next year. So, so it's, it's taking into consideration that possibility.
Just like a buck.
As opposed to, as opposed to the, the thirteen students at Harborside that would be picked up, those students, we know we need another bus run, because they are in a section of town, I won't, I'm not gonna say where they are, they're in a section of town that's isolated, kinda isolated from everybody else. And so there's no question about it, we need, if, if we were to start this today, we would need an additional bus run to go pick up those eleven students. Whereas opposed, whereas at East Shore, West Shore, and, and the private schools, currently, we could assume them into our current, but we can't assume that that's gonna be the case next year.
Part of the issue having incoming sixth graders, again, we don't, you know, we, you know, we don't know where they reside. We also have eighth graders leaving, as, you know, so, I mean, it may not so be so much the overall enrollment as much as it's, it's again, coming down to where, um, where kids reside, and whether or not that impacts on the, the runs and the tiers.
So if I could just dovetail off of that, those eleven students that are in an isolated, you know, neighborhood off the beaten path, you would need another bus run because?
Because.
Bell times?
Well, definitely, the thirty-minute window, that's, that's our, that is gonna govern everything that we do. And, and you might say, well, just add ten minutes to the, to the, to, but then you have to add ten minutes to each tier. And so you already have elementary school students that are getting home after four o'clock, and, uh, we, if you add ten minutes per tier, you're adding another thirty to forty minutes onto the school day for those elementary school students. And you can't pick it up on the other side because you're dealing with the darkness. And, and it's just, it's just not gonna work, we'd be extending the day too far.
Other questions or comments, Mr. Whiskeman?
Well, um, something that, that Mrs. Federico said, um, we asked for two scenarios, uh, which you presented, but we did not ask you to prepare, uh, another scenario, which was, uh, I think inferred, uh, and you were talking about the possibility of the middle schools at one mile, as I believe. We did not actually get numbers for that, and I'm, I'm just.
The elementary.
That's the bottom part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was the elementary.
Okay, we got that. All right, um, all right, uh, all right. No, they, never mind, then, I expect.
Um, I wanted to ask two questions. Back when we were discussing the, um, when we did our, the audit, we talked about creating a matrix so that there was a, you know, set of standards that were being, you know, checked off, in terms of determining the
Oh, yeah.
The, um,
Hazards.
Hazard, you know, the, the cur, the riders who live within the walking distance but have a hazardous condition. Are we still using that matrix?
We are.
And then, um, regarding the high school runs, um, and this may be a question for Judy. So I've heard in the past, there are conversation about the, the ridership. So for me, this is, this is something that I'm struggling with. Um, we know that the high school ridership is, is it like typically sixty percent? I think I've heard, I was back in some minutes and looked, is that?
It's lower, it's lower.
It's lower than that. Um, and so when we determine, uh, the bus stops and how many buses we need, are you, do you overload them at all?
We've, we've done that this year, we, we've overloaded more than we did last year. Um, in, in the, in the middle school, um, I'm sorry, in the elementary school cases this year, we've had a number of buses where we have to split, and Judy, jump, please jump in at any time. But we, we've had to split, because we just had, we had, we've had close to sixty students, and we just couldn't handle it.
Yep.
The high school level, there are certain buses that are full all the time. It, it depends on, it depends on where the students are coming from, where we're picking up from. But, but there are some, there are other ones that, you know, on any given day could be down to thirty percent.
So it fluctuates a lot, for the high school level fluctuates?
And, and it fluctuates by season, depending on who's playing, what, what, what kind of extracurricular activities are going on. Um, it, it fluctuates, um, by rainy days versus, you know, on, on rainy days, you have less kids on the bus, so they're obviously getting rides to school, things like that.
Um, so, I mean, my thought was that if you, if you, if you know that the ridership is low, is there a consistency, like certain bus, certain buses are always low, and certain ones are always high, or?
Well, I can say that the middle school level, those buses are much more full than.
So at the high school level, if we just talk about the high school?
On the high school level, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to say that every day it's gonna be the same, we only do it, we only do this outfit every year. There are some buses that are definitely lower than others, but then you have to take into consideration, as, as Mr. Richatelli said, that thirty-minute window.
Right.
If you, even if you try to overload it, you're now putting that bus at a forty-minute run, and you still have to go to the stops, because you don't know if those kids are gonna be there or not. So that's the other part.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that, about going to the bus stops. I mean, my thinking is that if, you know, you're, we're talking about students that live closer to the schools, so the buses are going in that direction anyway. But you have, you know, you do have a good point, that you do have to stop at the stops, because our parents are not willing to opt out, as we've offered them to do.
So it's, it's a difficult situation. The, the private students will say, they'll, they'll even say to us, they'll come back and say, okay, well, these kids have never taken the bus, especially private school, that one works, the buses, and say that nobody ever comes. If I can stop that bus from going to that stop, I can make it faster back to my route. And I've actually called families and said, if you're not gonna use the bus, just let me know, and then we're gonna reroute it, if you need it back, call me back. And I've done that a few times, too. But it's hard, because you have to go to the stop.
Okay, other questions? Mr. Sadie.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through the board to Mr. Richatelli. Um, I think it's an excellent presentation we got before we started tonight. And I commend you on that, and I like the materials we see. But I have a question, uh, maybe you don't have an answer, but in Monroe, which is a, which is a community that is all bus. You referred to things, and, and you say that there are numerous cluster stops, they don't go into the cul-de-sacs and private developments, did you look into that at all, or just you reported that's what they, what they do?
That's, that's what, that's what they reported to us, and I recall, I think he told us that they have the policy, but because they have no sidewalks, they virtually pick up everyone, but they, but they try and cluster them. They don't go in cul-de-sacs, and, and they try and cluster the students. So I think what he was telling us is that they make the students walk as far as they can to a bus stop to cluster the students, so that they're not picking up at every student's house. I, that's what I inferred from it, I could be wrong.
And, and again, as a follow-up, but- And again, as a follow-up, it's not like they're indicating they're going to be walking three-quarters of a mile or a mile. They just didn't give you the number, that fair. I have some other questions.
Oh, sure. Uh-huh.
Thank you. In this question, Madam Chair, through you to administration, and I think would involve Dr. Fieser as well. If we hold the thought of Mr. DeRosa initially for a minute, of the budget and the cost, we know that you've given us figures. But is that going to affect and impact our ability to act on another agended item, which we're here for a second reading? Because that appears not to have anything in, in it at all about the increase in, in costs.
Oh, the, you're talking about some...
Budget assumptions.
Sorry, budget assumptions.
The budget assumptions and... I'm saying there's nothing I can see about an increase in transportation costs. Is one of those going to impact it or not?
No, I believe there is one statement in here that says if, if there were changes that there would be up or...
It is. It's like you recorded the way down, if the walking distance of students to schools is reduced, the cost of transportation will rise and potentially significantly. So it is there.
Right. So, so we were aware of it, it's just that we, you know, we didn't know, and the, the assumptions and priorities are established, we established them in September, brought them to you, and, you know, and then with the idea that you would invoke on it. But that's not to suggest, and we didn't put a figure in it, but we are conscious of the fact that depending upon the decision of the board, yes, it would impact.
And then if we get to the next step of the process, if we, if it's approved this evening, which is the second reading, the budget is not going to be crafted by this board. Is that accurate?
Correct. First of all, the budget will be crafted by us. We bring it to the board in early January, and then the board receives it and ultimately makes changes if they so choose, and then recommend a budget to the city.
Now hysterically, again, just following up on this historically because I wasn't there, when this issue came up two or three, four years ago, were we in a position where one board pushed it to the next board for financial purposes?
No. Well, the previous board, the previous board made decisions which had impacted this board. You're, you're following up on the, some of the decisions that were made by the previous board.
For example, the previous board made the decision for us to reduce the budget by $200,000, and we made a valiant attempt at doing that, but could not meet the $200,000. We reduced in transportation by $165,000, and then had to find the other $40,000 somewhere else in the budget, $35,000 somewhere else.
And I think that your budget priorities also indicate, and as the presentation was done, whatever this board does, it could be changed by the next board that comes in. It could be changed by the Board of Alderman also, and the Finance Board. Thank you.
Dr. Goldwirken?
I have a few questions and comments, and a couple of ideas that I wanted to throw out there. I'll start with the ideas. Because if we make a change that's going to increase the cost, that's got to come from, come from somewhere. Come from the city or come from a decrease in other programs. So one, two things that I thought we should think about. One is, have we thought about electric or hybrid buses instead of gas buses? I guess that's for you, Mr. Richatelli.
I can, I can answer that to a certain extent. We haven't, it's not that we haven't considered it. The initial outlay of costing is cost per unit. The cost of hybrid buses, as I understand it, I haven't really researched it, but the ability to be able to do that is, is a tremendous upfront capital outlay. And it may pay itself back over, you know, over a certain amount of time. But I don't know that with the fleet that we would require, 65 to 70 buses, that's a big capital outlay. And for that reason, we haven't really researched it, researched it all that much.
The next thing is the potential to change the start time or the day period of the high schools. Because I know we have one high school student here in the audience, and teenagers in general aren't all that happy and productive at seven o'clock in the morning. And maybe in terms of the bus runs, if you shifted things around and our high schools didn't start until later in the morning, let's say 10 o'clock, that maybe, you know, a whole different use of the buses could come into play. It's just an idea that I've had and some feedback that I've gotten from other people in the community that would like to see a, a change in the high schools in terms of time.
So, so I would respond that, you know, I'm pretty familiar with the research around adolescent sleep, and you are, you are correct with respect to adolescents needing more sleep, and yet in schools across the nation, they're the first to, to begin the day. It's the, it's the exception where you would have, for example, elementary children starting earlier than high school students. It's, it's something that I don't know if, if Milford has ever looked into. What I can say to you is what becomes the number one obstacle, whether or not you agree with it, the number one obstacle are your after-school activities and particularly your athletics. Because the, you know, all of our athletics, for example, are played as part of leagues, and the schedules are established, not by us. We're handled the schedule for every single sport. And so it would mean that, for example, the athletes would be released, would need to be released from school, well, certainly two, two to three times a week in some cases in order to compete. So that's, that's one major issue. The other side of it is, is that the, the students, even depending upon what time the day started, you're, you're also talking about even home, home games would also have to be earlier in the day because you have visiting teams to be coming in. And there's the, again, the impact also on other extracurricular activities. That becomes the, the greater issue. The other issues are, you know, there are, at least in the school systems that I'm aware of that have looked at this issue. While we may say it makes more sense to have elementary children begin earlier in the day, there's a lot of parents who would not want to see their children begin school at 7:20 in the morning, for example. So, I mean, it's just, it's a, it's, it's a really good question. I want you, I want you to know that there have been countless school systems in the, in the state and across the nation that have really looked at it. There are some that have somehow made it work, but it really, really becomes difficult just simply because of high school being that unique piece where after school, there are slews of things that occur, many of which demand that kids have to be somewhere at a particular time, so.
Okay. I just, yeah, in response, I wasn't saying that elementary school should be started earlier. That I would keep where it is, but just make the high school at a later time. But something to take into that.
Certainly with something, you know, I, obviously, if we were able to not have to be tied to the 30-minute window, you know, because of the tier, the bus tiers, you know, if we had a fleet of buses that, that transported just high school kids and another fleet that transported just middle school, and they didn't have to, one didn't have to rely upon another, you know, we could do a lot of different things. But, you know, we're not in that situation, and nor, nor our most school systems, because it's so costly to have that many additional buses.
One more comment. And I had made initial comments about the importance of exercise and the obesity crisis in this country, but I just wanted to say that I understand all of the parents, you know, I hear what you're saying about the walking distances being too much for your children, and, you know, I think that that's important, that we all hear that and listen to it. On the same, in consideration, though, I think that it's also very important that the Board of Education focuses its time and effort and expertise on the education part of the school system and not so much on the buses and the transportation issues. And I think that there are, as we heard in the last meeting, there are still great achievement gaps that we have in this district, and there are great academic needs that we have. And any extra $200,000, I would like to see them go to more programs. I think universal pre-K, we need, I think there are lots of things that would really increase the level of academics, and not just academics, but also career and vocational readiness for our kids. So, so I would think any additional spending should be done on, on educational venues rather than transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Goldwirken. So if other questions or comments, Mr. DeRosa, Mr. DeRigo, I'm sorry, all the time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. In my district, well, let me start off with saying, Mr. Richatelli, that was a great presentation. Judy, you guys work together like a Rubik, you're solving a Rubik cube that doesn't have an answer. I understand all the different variables, time, time of the day, weather, how many bus routes. In my district, along Wolf Harbor Road and the streets around it, I'm talking to all the parents, and they're complaining, but they adjusted, and they, instead of getting the child picked up, I was hearing what happened years ago, all the adjustments, they were bringing our children here, there, and everywhere, because of the intricacies that are involved with time, stops, and the time of day. With that said, over a year ago, I told this board, when several of you weren't here then, about how I was in Margaret Egan for three months rehearsing for a play, looking out the window at Lenox and Baldwin March, and an accident happened every five seconds, near misses, near misses, and how I said, wow, are you going to use that as a walking route? Now, if a child falls in a playground, and he skins his right knee, his mother comes out, puts Mercuricom on it, and puts a Band-Aid on the right knee, she doesn't put a Band-Aid on the left knee. Unfortunately, to solve this problem citywide, we're going to have to put a Band-Aid on the, on the left knee as well, and make it for the whole city. Hence, the large cost that Mr. Richatelli referred to, which, with the students going to Platte and the Bohag and the other schools involved. With that said, Jim, Mr. Richatelli, I'd like to give you the tools we need because we have a, we have a knee that's bleeding right now, and that knee has to get a Band-Aid. I'm not worried about what the Board of Finance is going to do, or what the Board of Alderman is going to do. I want to give you the tools that you need to solve this problem. Now, I'm good, I'm ready to vote for scenario number two. Thank you, Mr. Richatelli.
So just to clarify for the board, the process would be, if the board is inclined to do so, we would have to direct administration to bring us back a revised policy that shows us whatever, whatever distances we, we decide on. They, you know, they would need to take the time to revise the policy and to be vetted, making sure that all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, all, all the areas that need to be changed are changed. Our practice in our policy is that we do policy changes into readings, so they could potentially bring a revised policy back to us at the count meeting on the 26th, and we would vote on it on March 9th, which gives the, I'm sorry, November 9th, which gives, our last meeting, which gives, you know, everybody time to digest, time to make sure the policy is correct, and legal consonates to look at it, that would be, we need to be done as well. But, you know, this board today, tonight, you know, we would need to come to consensus that that is what we'd like to do. And we would then direct administration, come back to us with, with a revised policy, and then we would still take the two readings that, that we always do, and it is our policy to do, to consider it and before we vote on it.
Let's make it, let's make it so.
Madam Chair? Yes, Mrs. Federico.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add one last comment about the financial impact, because that's been talked about a bit tonight. You know, I want to thank Mr. Richatelli and Judy, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name because I might mess it up. You know, I want to thank you for all of your efforts so far to save money. I mean, it's really impressive when we read through here and we hear, okay, we tried to save 200, but we saved 165, and then there was a couple other occasions where with savings of $100,000 here and $100,000 there. You know, I think that that's fantastic, and I think it may sound a little discouraging to some to say, well, now we're talking about something where we're going to spend $288,000 more. You know, as Mr. DeRosa said earlier, that's a lot of money, and it sounds like a lot of money to all of us in this room, and I think we need to be sensitive to that. But we also need to be preparing our students to achieve at their highest level. And I don't think that a student walking 40, 50, 60 minutes to school in the morning is going to be prepared to achieve at their highest level. So I, I think, I certainly think it's worth the money, and I did the math earlier, I just want to point out, I wasn't texting on my phone, I was using the calculator. I did the math earlier, $288,000 on a $91 million budget is .003% of that budget. So when the budget presentation is done by the new board, you know, that could be laid out as .003% related to, to shorter walking distances, and I, I think the community would support it as well as the parents.
Does that percentage sound correct?
$288,000 divided by 91 million is .003.
Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, through you to the Board, I can seek consensus from the Board to direct administration to bring the Board at the October 26 Committee of the Whole Meeting a revision of policy P35401 for a first reading, reflecting reduction of the walking distance for the 2016, 2017 school year, and the high school will change it to two to one and a half miles, and the middle school will change it to one and a half to one mile.
So Mr. Sadi has suggested that we do direct administration to come back to us with that change so that we can discuss it further and look at the revision. So really, it's a matter of, of seeing if we have a consensus from the Board to do that or not. I'm, I'm hearing, I'm seeing some shaking of the heads down there. I see two.
I would support that.
Mr. DeRosa?
I would appreciate the time, because I tell you right now, I got a, I got a pounding headache with all these numbers.
Ms. Tobias?
So we're trying to think about it, I mean, yeah.
All right. Casey?
Yes.
Dr. Goldwirken?
Um, no, I don't know.
Mrs. Federico?
Absolutely, yes.
I'm sorry, was that a motion?
It's a consensus. We're just looking for consensus. I don't, I don't feel we need a, I mean, it's not really a motion because we're not acting on it.
I just wanted...
Yeah, just consensus to see, to direct administration bring back the...
To have a proposal brought forth for consideration.
Correct.
Yes. I'm willing to, to consider a proposal.
Mr. Sadi?
I agree with that.
I would as well, so, six, seven, eight, eight. So we will direct administration to bring us that proposal on revised policy for first reading on the 26th of October. Do you, do you need us to give you a written copy, or do you have it? You have it? You're just going down to the...
Right, exactly. Bring them, bring them proposed revised transportation policy reflecting scenario number two.
Correct. Very good. Thank you. All right. Any further comment or discussion on this before we move on to the rest of our agenda? All right. Thank you, board members. Dr. Fieser?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the official October 1 enrollment report, and Mr. Bird... The next item on the agenda is the official October 1 enrollment report, and Mr. Bird is going to lead that discussion if there should be one, but provide the information to you.
Good evening. Ed, in your packet on page 15, I can just walk you through the numbers very quickly. As stated in the agenda item, that this is the official enrollment for October 1 that we provide to the state. On the first page, on page 15, you'll notice the total K5 enrollment is 2,580. That is a difference of 70 students from last year, we had 2,649. The pre-K, including the pre-K, we have 2,775 compared to 2,842, which is again about 70 students less than last year. On the next page, we have our secondary enrollment. Our total for the high school, I'm sorry, for the middle schools is 1,442, which again is about 70 less students than last year. Enrollment was 1,514. And you'll see at the high school level, we have a current enrollment of 1,908, that is a slight rise from last year's official count on October 1 of 1,888, or approximately 20 additional students. Partly of that is the academy at that point last year was lower, it was 59, so we see an additional 24 students there. For your information, both of the high schools were approximately the same number, with foreign at 914 and law at 915. So we see a slight increase there. Overall, the total enrollment for October 1 of the district, 6,125, compared to last year's October 1 enrollment, 6,244, with a total reduction of approximately 120 students year over year.
Mr. Bird, can I ask you to once again give the high school totals, because I think we have different numbers on, we have 909 and 916.
That is correct, I was just giving you last year's number.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
For comparison, to give you some insight into the difference in numbers, the high schools are relatively flat compared year over year.
So I'm cross seeing, the high school, I think, has gone up a little bit since the summer. I remember reflecting that, oh my gosh, one of our high schools was under 900 at that point. So you see they've gone up a little bit, maybe that some kids have come back.
Typically, what happens, either we have new students moving in, we have some students readjusting their plans, going to private schools or deciding not to. Typically, it's, you have a give and take typically as well, some students decide to leave, and this number will change over the next eight months or so, you know, again, but this is the official enrollment we give to the state. It guides a number of things at the state level.
Questions? Mr. Whiskeman?
Two questions. Does this fall in line with our previous projections of what the number would be? And second part of that is, do we have estimated projections for next year?
Yes to both. The first, I can give you the elementary estimate from Malone and Bruns. Their estimate for this year was 2,581.
We're slightly above that.
The actual number is 2,580.
Without, without.
Oh, without the pre-K, oh, okay. Right, all right, I'm sorry.
So they're off by one. We're very disappointed. I don't have the other numbers for, we can provide that in the Friday packet as well as a future.
You know, are we expecting a continuous decline or leveling off, or what we're looking at, because it affects next year's budget and that's all. That can follow up as part of the budget presentation.
I believe as part of the budget presentation, the budget presentation will be providing those numbers.
Right, and we work with the New England School Development Council every year, they've been doing the projections for Milford for years and years and years. And, but what we do is we send them that data with the October 1 enrollment. So they're comparing October 1 to October 1. So we have data up through what was projected for this year by them, the actuals from last year and projected for this year, but we won't have then the new projections, and we just sent them to that information.
That's fine, but we'll get that as part of the budget.
Correct. Mr. Whiskeman, I happen to have the projections from middle school and high school in front of me, I had them in my folder. So this is from the original middle school enrollment projections from 2013, which I think are the last that they did. We didn't, I don't believe we asked them to update any middle school or high school work. So 2015, 16, the projection for middle school was 1452, so 10 higher than what we have. And for high school, it was 1926.
They're in the wrong business.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, they're in the wrong business today, should be taking that. Maybe hire them on the side midway.
Oh, no, no, no. Any other questions on the enrollment report? All right. Thank you.
The next item is the second reading on the proposed budget priorities and assumptions, and actually, it's, you know, we're requesting that the board would approve what's here. I should qualify in light of Mr. Sadi's question. With the board approving these, they are not, it is not something that cannot be revisited on the part of the board. The board has the right to revisit priorities, assumptions, you know, at any point during the budget process. This is something that we are asked as the administrators to come forward and provide to the board and suggest, this is what we would, you know, list as our priorities and what the assumptions would be, given the financial information that we have as of this point in the year, trying to anticipate what a budget would look like a year from now. But that's not to suggest that the board certainly doesn't have the right to say we want to add something, we don't feel this is clear enough, et cetera.
So this is second reading of the policy, so we're going to discuss it further and then, you know, potentially adopt it. Mr. DeRosa, you have a question?
No, I just, I'll wait for discussion.
Is there a discussion? Mr. DeRosa.
Oh, sorry. Is there any way, I know that, you know, you have it here, and I'm reading off page 19, hopefully it's right there enough, of percentages here of 8 to 12 for insurance, two and a half to an F. Is there any way you can put in here, you know, under the, if the walking distance students to schools reduced, a percentage of increase, or somehow, you know, put that in there so, obviously, we know we're not going to get it back there, but, you know, the intention is that, we know it's going to increase, and, you know, we don't want to assume that we're going to incur anything other than what the assumptions are, so for budget planning, you know, I just think it's prudent, if we're leaning towards changing the top net distance, then we should at least put it here.
Can I ask a question? Would you be comfortable with, since we know that what we've asked them to bring back could potentially cost up to 288,000, would you be comfortable saying that if the walking distance of students to school is reduced, the cost of transportation will rise up to that amount, rather than a percent, since we know today what that percent is, what that number is? Or, Mr. Richitelli, can you provide a percent right now, so that we can?
We could first, we could provide a percentage of the current transportation budget and add 288,000, we can do that by the end.
By the end, by the end, time is, or stop talking about this? Is that what you're looking for, Mr. DeRosa?
Yeah, I just.
Something more quantified?
Yeah, because, you know, again, we may not be here, you know, next term, and, you know, I know what it's like when they cut to 200,000, we had inherited that and so forth, and I'd rather not put.
Leave it generous, or you'd rather have this decision.
Absolutely. So there's clearly defined assumptions.
So Mr. Bird's going to go, we had a budget vote, and then I'll do that. And it's going to be an estimated number, because the transportation contract is going to rise by $300,000, so it's going to be. Yeah, I can give you a.
While we're waiting, if I could just, I just want to clarify something, that the 200,000 that the board reduced at that point was, the board, they lived with that. I think what this board inherited was the transportation audit stuff, that was, those decisions that were made that we then had to implement. But that original 200,000 of a reduction in that budget was, that was done during the budget process, in that January, and then that board that made that decision lived with that.
Right, it went into effect immediately to be applied then for the following years.
But definitely, the audit stuff that we talked about and implemented was something that carried out over the course of a couple of years. Any other comments or questions on the budget assumptions, Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the administration. There was a news report last week, towards the end of the week, Dr. Fieser and Mr. Richitelli, that the state is changing its rules on the standardized testing, and they're going to be eliminating some. Is that accurate? And if it is, would this impact the cost and the budget assumptions at all?
First of all, in the 11th grade, there will be a major change, and that is that the smarter balance assessment will not be given to the 11th graders moving forward. Instead, the SAT test that kids take for college entrance, the SAT will be the test for 11th graders. That test will be paid for by the state, just as the smarter balance is paid for by the state. So there will be no costs that would be incurred for next year.
Again, through Madam Chair, through you, it's unclear from the article, with the students that were taking the SAT, do they have to come up with the cost, or do we have to come up with the, Board of Education has to come up with that cost for SATs?
The SATs for the 11th graders, as part of the meeting the state mandated, is paid for by the state. We don't pay for that.
So it's not going to affect the budget?
No.
Thank you.
Other questions on the assumptions and priorities?
No, I just want to add one other comment if I may.
Okay, well, go ahead, because we're waiting.
Actually, it was the Mr. Richitelli, and he's going to be.
That is.
Head thrown into the bucket over there. I know we looked at heating, you know, we're looking at electricity, gas for cost to the rise, maybe make a note, has there been other opportunities of ways to reduce that, whether it's solar, electricity, you know, panels rebanked and so forth, I mean, I think, you know, especially with the big push that they're trying to do in environmental and so forth, has that ever been addressed? And I don't know if it's the right time to put in the budget assumptions, but has that discussion ever been had? And just briefly, you know.
Yes, when this board adopted last year's budget, if you'll recall, the contract with synergistics is over, so that contract was approximately 250,000. You earmarked about half of that, or about 125,000 for us to start looking at new infrastructure that could, you know, that could continue to reduce costs and reap efficiencies over time. So we've met with several different agencies, solar, we're looking, you know, there's possibilities of solar, we're looking at UI incentives for LED lighting in some of the schools. So, yes, the answer is yes, we're researching all of those things, and with the money that you provided in this year's budget, hopefully, we'll be able to use some of that money for new infrastructure and leverage it against incentives that are offered through various agencies.
Just one other, why would you expect to report back to the board and the options or opportunities?
Well, we.
Obviously, it's not this board, but I'm just.
Right. Hopefully, by budget time, we still have discussions that, you know, that are ongoing. We haven't developed exactly what strategy we're going to go for, but hopefully, around budget time, we'll have a better picture, where we'll be investing those dollars. And I have the figure for you. The current 15-16 regular education budget is 1,985,654. So if the figure that we presented to you tonight had 288,000, that would be an increase of 14.5% for next year.
Does that include the contract increase?
It does not include the contract increase. So I would say maybe if you wanted to do a range, that you would maybe do a range of 14 to 16%.
I'd be more comfortable putting that on there. I'd rather not CS a potential significantly. Actually, I had the words defined, that was my question, what does that mean? So to me, that's more definition.
Okay, so 14, is everybody in agreement with adding that?
Point of order. It would seem to me that we'd be making a motion on what was presented to us, would there not then be an amendment to the motion initially that would be made by Mr. DeRosa and then ruled upon? If we were to change what the documents are that are provided to us to act on tonight?
Well, during a second reading, we can make additional changes if we choose, but I think it could go either way, in terms of formality of the change.
So Mr. DeRosa makes an amendment, amending a motion, and we just rule that, that's all.
Other, just, yes, Mr. Whiskeman?
Not a question on the SRO program. If I recall correctly, we attempted to add one additional SRO officer last budget, but it did not get through for some reason. And are there any plans within your budget, projections at this point in time, or are you in discussion about the possibility of revisiting that thought and perhaps trying to add an additional officer this time around?
We, we're in discussions, I mean, to be honest with you, we haven't gotten to that level of detail in developing the budget.
Oh, well, I just thought it might impact, you know, it says, we will participate in a 50% funding, which is the same, but if we increase the number of officers.
Still 50%.
It would still be 50%.
Correct, yeah.
All right.
Other questions? Yes, Mrs. DeGriggo. Madam Chair, just to confirm in terms of process, we will vote on these budget assumptions and priorities, but a new board will enact the new budget, so they could change any of these. They could. Okay. Mr. Beaker, thank you. Okay, so, seeing no other discussion, what, we'll do a motion to approve the original document, and then you would make your amendment, just to keep the process consistent.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I make a motion, Board of Education approves the 2016-2017 budget priorities and assumptions as provided to us, item Agenda V, point 3, document pages 17 to 19.
Is there a second on that main motion, Mr. Sadi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whiskeman? Okay, so Mr. DeRosa, you have an amendment to make?
Yes, I do, I'd like to change on the, if the walking distance of students, the schools is reduced, the cost of transportation will rise of potential significantly, and have that changed to, if the walking distance of students, the schools is reduced, the cost of transportation will rise by 14 to 16%.
Mr. DeRosa's made an amendment to the main motion, is there a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Sadi, second. Discussion on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment carries unanimously. So we move back to the main motion as amended, Mr. Sadi?
Thank you very much. I make a motion, the Board of Education approved the 2016-2017 budget priorities and assumptions as amended by Mr. DeRosa, founded, Gen. Item V, point 3.
Second.
Mr. DeRosa seconds the amended motion. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Couple more items?
All good.
The next item on the agenda is approval of a state grant with the Milford Family Resource Center, and there's a detailed explanation here in the. And there's a detailed explanation here in the agenda form. There is one error, which, which is a reflection on me, and that is the second last sentence under status. I said the grant is enabling the addition of a fourth Ready-to-Learn class. I could say to you, I had a senior moment. Actually, what I did was I confused my grants. This is on the, this is on the Milford Family Resource Center, and these dollars are dedicated to the Milford Family Resource Center. They are not dedicated to, they're Ready-to-Learn program. And the monies have already been given to Milford, but the state requires that the board officially vote on it, and we didn't receive the official letter prior to us being able to bring it to you at this point.
Okay, so, Mr. Sadi?
I make a motion, Board of Education approve the CSDE grant for the Milford Family Resource Center, amount of $109,615 for the fiscal year 2015 to 2016.
Second.
Mr. DeRosa seconds. Is there discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is the quarterly budget report. Hard to believe that we're already one quarter through this fiscal year. Mr. Richelli?
Thank you, Dr. Fieser. You have in your package the quarterly report. As, as I tell you each time we do a quarterly report, we report to you on a quarterly basis, but we're watching the budget very, very carefully on a weekly basis and sometimes on a daily basis. It's our responsibility to you to make sure that the district remains in a fiscally sound state. And, and I can report to you that we, where we are right now is really where we should be at the end of the first quarter. The dollar amounts that you see to the far right-hand percentage used is either encumbered dollars or actual spent dollars up to this point. And the, the, I know I sound like a broken record when I continue to talk about the number of retirements that we had last year, or two years ago, and the number of retirements we had this past fiscal year, but it continues to impact us for one more budget year. And so, the line item that we continue to watch extremely closely is the teacher salaries and the retirement accounts. But right now, we, we believe that, that we will be okay. If we, if, if there are factors that would make that change, we, we certainly would react to it immediately and stop spending in certain areas. And that's why we, you know, you'll see some of the, some of the, I'm not gonna say discretionary spending, but some of the items that we could hold off on are at such low percentage of spend because we hold off until we know that we're not gonna have any problems. And teacher salaries, we will continue to watch, will continue to report to you. That's the one area that I'm not, at this point, concerned about, but we're watching carefully. Beyond that, we're really where we should be. Special education, you'll see, is the only area that's in deficit, but we expect that. And most of those dollars each year are reimbursed by the state excess cost grant. So, I know it's late, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on any of the line items, but, you know, unfortunately, that, as of now, this is, this is where we should be with our budget.
Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Richelli. If we go to page two, 4104, Energy Conservation Services is an earlier question that Mr. DeRosa asked.
Yes.
Is this anticipated, that this will be spent, or we're looking to spend it?
Oh, yes. We're, we're looking at, again, meeting with different agencies to see what is the best way to invest those dollars, but we will spend those dollars unless we get into a situation where we, we have a shortfall, and that might be one of the areas that we came to you and say, you know, this is where we've got to save in order to cover this. I don't anticipate that, but, you know, I, we can never say never. But we, we anticipate that we'll be using that money to invest in infrastructure. And again, being able to leverage the incentives that are out there against that money.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions, Mr. Richelli? Yes, Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Richelli. I, I think we've talked about this before, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The retirements expense, so $766,000 for the year. I know that's not teacher retirement parties, so it's, it's payouts that we have to make when they retire of accumulated sick time and such?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Under the, under the teachers' contract, and actually, all of our contracts, there are certain severance, severances that are paid out under the teachers. And when, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, but under the teachers' contract, we pay a severance for accumulated sick time up to, is it 180 days?
50% of.
50% of, of what they have.
Okay.
And, and various contracts are different as to what those dollar amounts are. So, we, we would, we would pay out any, well, the teachers, there's no vacation time, obviously, any personal time or any accumulated sick time that was left.
Okay. So, so we never accrue that money as the teachers are working in those previous years? We just take the expense that whenever they make the effective date of their retirement?
Correct.
Okay.
So, most of that, most of that, you, you can see that there's already been some retirements in this fiscal year. And most of it, obviously, because teachers retired in the school year, it's, it's paid out in June.
Okay, sure.
Sure.
Okay. We talked before about the encumbered column. So, that's what we plan to pay or expect to pay. So, in terms of teacher salary, that's calculated as, based on the teachers we have in the system now. I'm wondering, how would, how would we get into this available balance? Like, what change would have to happen to change that available balance?
The, if there were long-term leaves.
Okay.
Things like that, long-term leaves would affect that dollar amount. If less teachers, well, if teachers retired earlier, we, we brought in new teachers, that could have an effect on, it could have a positive effect on.
Okay, sure.
But any number of things that can happen throughout the year can affect that column.
Okay, okay. So, this is kind of like, based on status quo right now, the number of teachers employed to date?
Yep.
This is what we, today, this is what we expect of paying salary?
And, and the number of leaves that we currently have.
Okay.
Because leaves, believe it or not, when you have, when you have hundreds of employees, if, if, if somebody goes out on leave, that can, that can affect, that can affect that line pretty dramatically.
Okay, and the teacher that comes in to fill the leave goes on the same line? If you?
Substitute line or long-term sub.
Okay.
You draw on substitutes, long-term and regular subs.
Okay.
But a teacher couldn't be paid for a while while we're paying a substitute.
Right.
Then they can go in unpaid status for months while we're still paying a substitute. So, really, not science, obviously.
Okay, okay. So, the leaves probably wouldn't increase the salaries line per se?
Well, it could.
Yeah, it could.
Okay. I'm confused, but it's late.
I think some of it has to do with how long the substitute. So, if you have a long-term substitute, I mean, isn't there a point at which they would be coming straight out of the teacher salary line?
At some point, they go to a higher level, again, it's from a different line, I think. So, actually, no, you're right. I think a leave could actually only reduce it.
A leave could only.
Because the people we're paying could increase it or in a different line.
But if you help, if we were to spell that out and give it to the board?
Sure, that, yeah, that would be great. Just one could potentially.
Well, I was thinking, I mean.
Increase the teacher salary.
As a segue to my report, I'm showing you two teacher retirements right here, mid-year. So, that's gonna change it somehow, whether we hire somebody, I'm assuming we're gonna hire somebody at a lot lesser salary.
Lower rate.
So, that, that will change it. We also had a resignation that's not on here, a teacher resignation suddenly the other day. So, again, depending on if we bring somebody in at a higher rate.
Sure.
Instead of a brand-new teacher, salary, we might get somebody experienced. That will also change it.
Okay, sure, sure. So, a teacher hired at a, at a higher rate could reduce this available balance?
Right, because he's already figured in what the current teacher is exactly making.
Okay, okay. But teacher, new teachers at lower rates and leaves will only increase the available balance?
Correct. For the most part, yes. A little tired too, but again.
Thank you, thank you, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, so, now we can move on to the next item, Dr. Fieser, on your report?
Which is our, our human resources report, so do you want to pick up?
Yes, thank you. You had mine left the report, listing the job postings, recommendations, retirements, resignations, as well as many, many stipends. We are still hiring. I did mention that we had a resignation later day, as, as well as these two retirements. Special Ed seems to be taking the brunt of our turnover right now. So, we are still waiting for some staff members, just to let you know. Let's see. As far as the stipend goes, you have the fall, fall coaching stipends from the high schools, as well as the middle school activity stipends. Mrs. Kaufenberger, thank you for bringing that up. We do have some, what we do, and I do like to mention this every year, about our activity stipends of the middle school, we allow our middle school principals to substitute clubs based on, obviously, what their students are interested in, as well as who's available to, to give their time in certain activities. Some schools will have a yearbook, some won't. It really depends on interest, interest on both sides, students and staff members. So, that being said, we created these spreadsheets a couple of years ago to keep it really simple for everybody. What, what's on the left is the, the title of the, of the stipend, as well as what's allotted in the budget for that stipend. And then a blank space where they can say, yes, we're running, running yearbook, or no, we're gonna put ski club in there instead. What we ask our principals to do with, with these appointments is to keep in mind the number of students enrolled in each of these clubs, the number of hours per week that they'll meet, the level of supervision, something like ski club, you know, it's a little more, it's just safety issues rather than some, some other clubs. And we ask them to keep those, those items in mind when they're substituting. But ultimately, we're pretty much pigeonholed with, you know, the 778 or 556 or whatever the numbers are. So, it's not an exact science. We haven't been happy with it for a while, and it's come up in teacher negotiations here and there. And we are actually in the process of addressing, addressing that. We have a small committee together, I think our first week is tomorrow, to address it with the MEA, with the teachers' union. We want to make something that's better for everybody. In looking at other contracts, I've pulled contracts online, offline, where certain districts will have parameters. So, you can pay this much, but here's what it entails, this many days a week, this many hours, this many students, and a lot of range, a range of hours, a range of student numbers. So, we'd like to get to the point where it's a little more structured like that and provides a little more guidance in the areas of stipends. So, we're working on that.
I could interject. The good news is, is that the, this is something that we have been conscious of, particularly the disparities between and among stipends, and you see them also in, for coaches, some, you know, and for whatever reason, in negotiations, it never was broached. And, you know, and we, we certainly have been pushing that. The good news is, is that MEA, the Milford Educators Association is really open to taking a look at the stipends and seeing if they could be perhaps equalized. And then also, a lot of the changes that have occurred over the years that simply have not been changed, and the contract itself would be cleaned up. And so, there would be, there's gonna be a formal committee that's gonna be established to really start to take a look at this. And it's very timely because the teacher negotiations begin next.
January?
Oh, they begin in January. So, so it's timely, and maybe we can really make some headway around this.
Yeah, and it has been broached in previous contracts, but it's just such a daunting task that it's not like you're gonna sit across the table and hash out something. You really need people focused to look at that as a sole issue, you know, and work on that. So, as of now, the, the stipend amounts are driven by the contract, correct? By the contract and the budget. Right. And, oh, I just lost my train of thought. Mr. Whiskeman?
Speaking of contract, all individuals who receive stipends are full-time members of the, of the district, or are there part-time or actual people who not under?
All of the above.
All of the above?
Yes. Obviously, these are stipends in the teachers' contract are our main priority. We try to get teaching staff to take all of these stipends. In the case of coaching, it's, it just doesn't always happen. So, you try, and there are other people within the district that will perform some of these stipends, paras, I'm trying to think. I know at West Shore, there's a couple of other staff members that are doing stipends, which is great, it's great for the community. We see people that they see every day conducting a crochet club or a jumper club or whatever. But yes, sometimes there are outside people that come in. And we hire them, we go do all the same things we do for any other new hire.
They, they become employees.
They become our employees, exactly. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Pazna?
I don't have anything else to report on.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Fieser. We move to the consent agenda item then, Mr. Sadi?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Make a motion, Milford Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items, a dispersment report, item number one, and number two, consideration of the minutes of September 15, 2015, business meeting, September 28, 2015, Committee of the whole.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We didn't have any new business tonight, brought before the board, so board comment? Do we have a board comment? None? Mr. DeRosa did a board comment tonight?
Just, just to get on comment, I know the next two weeks or the next month, there's, motions are gonna fly, statements will be made and so forth. But I, I second the chair's first statement that said about focusing attention and job for this term, that is the number one priority, and build this goal with the season. But I, I don't know about you, but I'm wiped.
We can adjourn.
I second that motion right there.
Mr. Sadi, motion adjourned. It's already been seconded, but.
I can't, I don't have more comments?
I'm sorry.
It's only 10 o'clock, John. The motion, adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, second by Mr. DeRosa. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. John could stay if you want.
I'm not staying.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, you and the chair and chairman.